Regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:03 PM. I'm going to ask the city manager to do the invocation and the city attorney to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for today. We thank you for bringing us here to conduct city business. We pray that you pray over all the individuals here that we can come out with great solutions and great outcomes. In your name, we pray, amen. Thank you.
Hope you guys are having a good evening. It's a bit cold out there and the price of eggs is really high, right? That's what I've learned over the weekend. So, of course, we want to take our friends, neighbors in Monterey Park into consideration and keep them in our prayers and also to our friends up in Northern California who also had something else going on. And actually, there's been a couple of other instances where there's been attacks within other people's communities throughout the United States, like about two or three other ones. What's considered minor at this point? Two or three people being killed? So now we're different categories? I think that's awful. So let's pray that things get solved and that people, the appropriate actions are taken, whatever they may be. Okay, a combination of things. So, Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Manning?
Here.
Councilmember Montero?
Present.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Okay, before we start, I am going to just go through a couple of things that I need to remind members of the city council, members of the community out there. With regards to city council meeting decorum, we'll just start off the year fresh and just remind everyone that there's a certain level of decorum required of those people who are coming to speak to the council. There's a limitation of three minutes for everyone to speak at the podium. People do not have to give their name, do not have to give their address, and can remain anonymous. We have a history of asking for that, so now we want to be in compliance with the actual requirements from the Brown Act. So, we have, it's been voluntary, but now we no longer officially require it, so I'm just stating that upfront. There's a freedom of expression. People can say whatever they want about the city, about their issues, about elected officials here. So, I think we all signed up for something up here, and so we should be able to be bold enough and have the thick skin to be able to accept whatever critiques or criticisms are, even if it's founded on anything solid or not. So, I've had my fair share of people express their disagreement. And also, so if there's, if somebody is out of order and somebody is threatening anybody up here or threatening somebody out in the community, that's a different story. There's limitations when it comes to that. And if there's threats of violence, et cetera, that calls for an immediate addressing by our sergeant-at-arms, okay? So, our sergeant-at-arms would escort. But what I will be required to do is give a first warning to the speakers and then a second, if this occurs and if this is not tempered down, then there's a cause for removal by our sergeant-at-arms, okay? So, the other, on the flip side, it's the council member's responsibility to stay quiet and not to interrupt those people that are speaking there, by any means. That's, I'm going to be enforcing that solidly. And in addition to that, council member colleagues are not to interrupt each other when somebody has a floor. That's why we gave the floor, no matter how much you disagree with your colleagues, no matter how much you're burning inside because, you know, you felt offended, you'll get your time to respond, fully and uninterrupted. So, we'll be enforcing that more completely at this point, okay?
Can I pick you back? Can I pick you back?
No, we're going to be continuing with the items that are on the agenda. We're going to just keep going. Our first item tonight is a certificate of appreciation. Madam Clerk, please proceed with a certificate of appreciation for Brianna Araceli. We'll have, we'll just, during oral communications from council members.
Can we call all the ladies up at once?
Yes.
Brianna and Carla, Andrea could not be here, she's sick this evening. My bad, I forgot their certificates in the office, she's going to go get them real quick.
Is this your item?
This is mine, yes, I'm sorry.
Could you go ahead and just tell us a little bit something about them?
Yeah, absolutely. So Brianna and Carla and Andrea as well, they've been interns with us for a couple of years.
You can face the audience so they can see you guys.
They've actually helped out quite a bit with the food drive and also with other things with the, with the community here. They helped Paul out quite a bit, and when the opportunity came up to keep these young ladies, I decided to keep them on to help with the food drive, but also to help with expanding that because the food drive is just one part of it. But they're going to help with many things in the clerk's office besides the food drive. That's going to be a very minor part of it. Andrea, again, she could not be here, but she also was a part of it as well. So, these young ladies here should be applauded for all of that they do, and I thank you guys a lot because you guys do a lot. I'm sure people here know them, they see them around all the time. And let me get your certificates.
And through the chair?
Yes.
I want to say thanks to Carla because, you know, for the past four years that she has been at the Hawthorne High, she have volunteered every single year for the community barbecue dinner, for the K-9, and for the October, for the holiday assistance program, and she is a brilliant and intelligent woman. She got such, so much good scholarship for the, for going to college, so thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I know pretty sure that Brianna does the same thing, so thank you very much.
And right on time, I think that's right on time, right?
Yes, thank you.
This is all her. We'll give you the floor on this one. We'd like to join, but this one's appropriate for you. You want to?
And I believe we have a presentation. She's going to present.
Good evening, distinguished mayor, Mayor Protem, city clerk, treasurer, and attendees. Today, I would like to continue my presentation about the protest giveaway. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Paul Jimenez for leaving his legacy, the city clerk protest giveaway to Dana Williams Hunter and the community. His efforts not only created a robust program that serves over 500 people on a bi-weekly basis that increases sense of community in our people. We also would like to thank the city clerk Dana Williams Hunter for her support, leadership, and dedication to the program. The giveaway at its original place has created a tremendous benefit to our community during uncertain times such as COVID-19 and continuous economic difficulties that we have suffered as families when trying to cover responsibilities such as rent, and having the giveaway allow us to have a plate of food in our table. And as you can see here, here are some of the benefits that we have provided to our community, not only to support them economically, but also to help other people to have a sense of community in the city of Hawthorne and show them that we are the city of the good Beyond our every other week giveaway, we also try to tackle other necessities in our neighborhood while also interacting and representing our community. Our last gift card program allows us to find the statistics that direct us to our giveaway that has served 80% to the city of Hawthorne and the other 20% to our neighbor cities such as Landau, Inglewood, Lennox, and others. Our giveaway has a tremendous increase, as you can see in the comparison between 2021 and 2022. The increase of around 8,777 people in just one year, which shows how the need of this giveaway has expanded in between our community members. As community members and volunteers, we would like to maintain the program to see the expected increase for 2023 and for the future years to continue supporting the challenging necessities of our community. And as you can see on the graph, in 2021, we served over 3,315 families in around 14 events, while in 2022, we doubled, if not more than that, we went beyond our numbers, and so we expect that for 2023. We wouldn't be able to successfully help our residents without the support of various organizations that not only volunteer but also provide resources for, for our giveaway. For example, when we provided diapers with the support of Win LA, wipes from the Rotary Hawthorne LAX Lennox Club, and masks from the Southwest Carpenters alongside the mayor. For that, we thank them. We would like to invite you to come to our event this Saturday as we are collaborating with Win LA to provide diapers and wipes as well as when we provide the same of produce and vegetables with fruits for our city. Last but not least, we are very happy to invite you to our community event to come on and invite our community members as well to come on February 11th to celebrate Black History Month in honor of our African-American leaders such as Honorable Congresswoman Maxine Waters and our elected officials. Thank you very much for your time, and we hope to continue serving the city of the good neighbors. Thank you.
The other one?
Thank you so much, Carla.
So, I just want to congratulate the city clerk, the city clerk for moving this program along and looking for ways to expand it. We thank our previous, our recent city clerk, Paul Jimenez, Dr. Paul Jimenez, for all his efforts and taking it to a place where we can, that it's been getting a lot of attention. And so now, there's even more things that I hear that you want to do, Mr. City Clerk, so I really commend you and the volunteers and all the people who donate the different foods, stuffs, and the diapers and all those materials to the residents of the city of Hawthorne and neighboring cities. Thank you. Okay, let's see, so we're going to move on. That was it. There was three ladies listed here?
One young lady said she could not make it.
Okay, and can we get her name so we can honor her too?
That's Andrea Jimena Gaitean.
Okay, so we'd like to congratulate, let's give applause for all three of them. Madam Clerk, guidelines for oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, first, we have Mr. Joseph Gemlick, Hawthorne Boulevard Mobility.
Good evening. I am glad to see that the city is moving forward or at least taking steps on the agenda with a Hawthorne Boulevard mobility improvement project. And so along that lines, I'd just like to give my public comment on current state of affairs on it that I just find a little bit sad. In particular, it's the fact that Hawthorne Boulevard is plastered with giant yellow signs that are telling people to not even try to visit businesses across the street between the hours of 4:00 PM and 7:30 PM, you know, a three and a half hour gap every day. I find that, you know, that level of hospitality kind of explains a bit of why businesses along Hawthorne Boulevard are not at the strongest they've been. And so along those lines, I'll just end my comment by saying that a downtown that you cannot walk through is not really a downtown. Thank you.
Yan Fang?
I represent the residents living between Cobble Room and Quambook Avenue at 126th Street to request your office to grant us vehicle permits so that we don't have to loop around the same block, but back and forth for many runs for a parking spot, so that we don't have to fight for a parking spot with residents from apartment building nearby, so that we can park our car in the street right in front of our home instead of several blocks away. Our block is located in a high-density residential area where each apartment building had too few parking spaces for each unit. Typically, a two-bedroom unit require at least two parking spots, yet each of unit in this block only has at most one car garage. That would mean at least half of the residents would have to struggle for parking. The nearby apartment building also have the same parking shortage issue. To further verify this, I asked a tenant from each of the nearby apartment complex how many parking space he or she gets. I was told that they only get one for each unit, but they need more. However, whenever it's after 6:00 PM or during weekend holiday, there are never any parking spots left for them, as all parking spots are already taken by residents from nearby apartment complex such that they have no choice but to park in front of their own garage, an option now removed by Hawthorne Public Works. And you may already know there are only five property with about 10 family living in the said block. However, one side of our block has an excessively long driveway that reduce over half a block for parking, and additional excessively long red curb reduce even more parking spots. Now, the new parking regulation and new parking space marking leave the parking situation much worse than ever, such that a disabled mother with three children in our block had to park her car three blocks away to walk all the way to her home with her infant. I hereby request your office to provide more parking spaces or new parking structure, require high-density residential building to provide a suitable amount of parking for their occupants, implement parking permits for our block like 145th Street between Cobble Room and Doughty Avenue. I understand that it's not an easy process and take time to complete. However, can you please at least implement parking permits in our block? I have already gathered the 21 signature for this parking permit petition in our block. Thank you very much. So here are the signature.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Donaldson?
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank everyone for, for the, we had our Christmas party, and this is the best that the chamber has ever had. We gave out 1,000 toys, we gave out 348 hams because we could not get turkeys, and we had 15 pallets of food, thanks to Mohammed. And our Christmas mixer, we had over 62 people at the Christmas mixer, which is the most that we've ever had. And our, my second thing is February 16th, we're going to have our Valentine's mixer, and there'll be a $250 cash prize given out that night. We just don't know exactly if it's going to be for the best couple, what they've said, or, we don't know just yet, but it's going to be $250 cash prize. And that's February 16th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Hawthorne Chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a representative from the Sociedad Jose Martí, Renee Morfe. Okay, I did read it right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, and city managers and staff. My name is Renee Morfe, I'm the president of Sociedad Jose Martí. We're a Cuban nonprofit organization that was established here in the city of Hawthorne in 1992. We are here this evening to thank you for awarding the grant that we applied for in a sum of $5,000. The grant will be, will allow us to continue our endeavor to socially grow our cultural events, conferences, theoretical performances, arts, and exhibition, humanitarian assistance, and preserving our national values as well, as sharing them with the city of Hawthorne and the surrounding communities. Thank you so much on behalf of our organization and the board of directors and members. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. I have no more cards. Are there anybody else wishing to speak and present to the city council? From a line, go ahead, ma'am. Come to the podium, ma'am. Yeah, you have the floor.
My name is Maad Sgorza. I am a United States postal letter carrier for the city of Hawthorne. I have been a resident of Hawthorne for close to 25 years. Tonight, we stand before you for one reason alone. We need immediate action regarding the street safety of our children. Sunday, January 8th, an absolute tragedy struck the lives of this immensely strong Leon family behind me. We are here to demand an extremely necessary change in our city. The night Michael was taken from us was not just another accident. What occurred that night was preventable, and we are here tonight to ensure that this horrific loss is never felt by another family in our city. We have submitted a formal proposal to the engineers of the city of Hawthorne to begin a project to construct a possible pedestrian crosswalk, a light signal, and a speed detection system to protect the residents of El Segundo Boulevard and Truro Avenue before Inglewood Avenue, between Inglewood Avenue and Hawthorne Boulevard. I myself witnessed cars flying past my window, 60, 70, 80 miles an hour, day and night. With a school on nearly each corner, markets, and laundry services, I really wonder why these precautions were ignored. Hundreds of children walk that very boulevard every single day. We sincerely hope that the city council of Hawthorne will ensure that this matter receives top priority and be expedited. We are also formally requesting for an emergency placement of a mobile speed radar near the scene of the accident until possible future projects be completed. We hope that you understand that it is not the work of a grieving mother, father, or sister to ensure our children are provided with the safety they deserve. Tonight, we stand before you in unity forever and loving memory of Michael Leon Bermudez. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, have you, have you, have you received that, Mr. City Manager? Have you received the, their proposal?
I haven't personally, but I'm sure if, she mentioned it was handed over in engineering, yes.
Okay. My, our condolences to the family and our prayers. Next, please.
Greetings of peace and blessings. My name is Abdullah Greg Ali from Islamic Center Hawthorne. I am the community outreach person. I see a lot of new faces here, congratulations to, and a lot of familiar faces, and congratulations to the new crew that you have working with you. I just want to thank you for the grant that you have allowed us to have at the Islamic Center Hawthorne and just appreciate. Center Hawthorne, and just appreciate all the support, and always pleasure to be involved with the Hawthorne community. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. My name is Olivia Valentine. I retired from the City Council in December after serving 11 years, and my purpose for coming here today is to correct a false narrative. On January 12th, the newly-elected Councilwoman was interviewed by NBC4 Los Angeles, and in that interview was complicit in creating a false narrative that she was the first black woman elected to the Hawthorne City Council. I am going to show a clip from the video of that interview, which is disturbing.
Philosophical when asked why it took Hawthorne with a 27% African-American population a century to elect its first black woman.
So I don't have that answer, but I'm here now, and we're gonna do amazing things.
And it's not just their own political futures they're looking forward to. All three women say they're thinking about the next generation.
To show my daughter.
As a result of the Councilwoman's response, the publication wrote the story with the headline Hawthorne Elects First Black Woman to Its City Council. They also showed the video as part of the story. Several people contacted me and were upset because they had seen the interview and knew that I was the first black woman elected to the City Council, and that was in 2011. Sometime later, the publication changed the first story and made a weak attempt to paper over the fraudulent narrative with a so-called updated version, which is available now online. And they also took down the video so the public can no longer see the interview. However, I have the original article. I'm going to give this to the city clerk and ask her if she would please make copies for the entire City Council. Aside from eclipsing my record, the interview and the story made Hawthorne look out of touch, as though it had never had black elected officials before. In fact, besides me, as most of you know, but perhaps the rest of the county of Los Angeles does not know, Hawthorne has already had a black mayor, two black council members, and a black treasurer. I just thought it important to correct a false narrative and set the record straight. Thank you all.
Are there, okay, Kyle Orleman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members and friends and neighbors. I am addressing item number 19 on tonight's agenda. I spoke to you two weeks ago about what was item 17 at the last meeting, and on the last meeting, I was able to access the supportive documents that came out with the agenda. For tonight's agenda, the supportive documents are not available, so I have not been able to see what it is has been recommended to be discussed on item number 19. I have a couple of comments that I wanna make. It's obvious that there's some kind of a move being made to put term limits on the sitting commissioners, and I have some very major concerns about that. There are supposedly 30 commission seats available across six commissions. Five of those seats are empty right now and not filled. Of the 15 commissioners that are eight years or more in service, we are the ones that are being targeted for being removed simply because of our experience. Those 15 commissioners that are sent across five of the six commissions have a total of 124 cumulative years of service to this city, and I assure you, it's not for the $25 per meeting honorarium that comes with that. If this move has gone through and eliminates those 15 commissioners, that will leave five of the six commissions at or under quorum and unable to do any further city business. As far as the Veterans Commission goes, three of the commissioners have been newly appointed in the second half of last year. They have between one and 10 hours of experience at this point. They are terrific, they're gonna do a fabulous job, but they have not been here for the previous eight years of the commission, and dumping this responsibility on them with, without that kind of background and without the guidance of the experienced members, I think would be a mistake. I think we all recognize that for those of us who live in this city, experience matters. That's why we've elected many of you for considerably more than eight years up there. Might be in one office or another, but most of you have been up there for more than eight years, and we do that because we value your experience. The same thing with the city staff and with the city department heads. We don't dismiss them when they hit eight years. We don't go to our police department and say, oh, command staff's all over eight years, let's turn it over to the rookies and let them hang everything, because that wouldn't be prudent, would it? I think we should relook at the idea of term limits. If there's going to be term limits for the commissioners, there should be term limits across the board. Maybe that's something the city needs to look at for, for the next election. Aside from that, I would say, taking the experienced commissioners off of these commissions, and one of those members, three of those members have over 20 years of volunteer experience to this city, and how dare we dismiss them because they are subject matter experts who can give the information that you need. This doesn't pass the logic test, and it doesn't pass the smell test. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the City Council under oral communications? Okay, we do have a representative from one of the state offices here, so I'll declare oral communications closed or ordered. Sir, I think you were gonna discuss some of...
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brandon Stancil. I'm with Assemblywoman Tina McKinner's office. I'm here today to honor the former Councilwoman, so if you could please take a stand with me, if you don't mind, Ms. Valentine. I have a certificate of recognition here that I would like to read, if I can read it amongst the council and the community, just honoring the Assemblywoman, or, I'm sorry, the Councilwoman for her time here, and I'll read it as read. It states, "In honor of your service as the first elected African-American City Council member for the city of Hawthorne, your hard work and dedication for over a decade to the city of Hawthorne is to be commended. On behalf of the 61st Assembly District, thank you for your commitment to lead, build and serve the people of Hawthorne. Congratulations, and may you have continued success in your future endeavors."
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, the consent calendar, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have four items on the consent calendar. They are items four through seven for your consideration and approval. Item four, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item five, City Treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item six, approval of the City Council minutes for the special meeting of November 29th, 2022, special meeting of December 13th, 2022, and the regular meeting of December 13th, 2022.
I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
Next, we have general matters. There's a presentation on this item. Madam Clerk, can you read item eight into the record?
Wait, I, I wanna make sure that you read off the resolution number 8389, which was number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution did not...
You didn't read it?
No, I did not, sorry.
Okay, that's okay, we still have time.
Yep, we'll do it right now. Item seven, resolution number 8389, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Hawthorne, California authorizing the increase of the monthly vehicle allowance for City Council members for adoption.
To the chair. Sir.
Resolution seven, I'm going to abstain, okay? All the four, five and six, I vote yes.
No, we already voted, uh, we already voted on item one.
Four, five and six, four, five and six, but not seven.
Yeah, exactly, so you can, you don't have to make that statement.
We already voted for four, five and six.
So you could just make a statement on the seven for whatever reason.
Ready?
Yeah. The only reason that I'm abstaining because, you know, I have Tesla, so I don't need no gas.
Never for sure. I'll go ahead and move.
Second.
The voting reflects Mayor and the council voting yes, with Councilmember Montero abstaining.
Okay.
To the chair, please.
That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead, sir.
City Clerk?
The City Clerk? Mr. City Manager, did you wanna address something?
Number eight, right? Number eight?
No, the, the name boards, we need to have the lights on at all time.
It usually is on, I don't know why it's not.
Okay.
Let's, let's take 20 seconds or so just to take a look.
Reset.
A full reset?
No, that's not it, it's not reset because it's, you guys' names aren't showing up, so...
No problem, let's get Diana to take a look at that. That was a special touch, I guess. All right, probably the sequence in which you start things up, I guess. All right. Item seven? Oh, no, okay, item seven. General Matters, item eight. Madam Clerk, can you read that?
Business collaboration presentation. And recommended motion is received presentation.
Okay, so you're gonna present, and we have, we're gonna just accept the presentation formally. Go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and everyone here tonight. My name is Kimberly Mack. I'm the Director of Housing for the city of Hawthorne. On December 13th, the City Council member meeting, Mayor Pro Tem, English, gave a directive to the city manager to form a business collaborative committee. This committee was designed to engage in businesses, conduct outreach, offer support, provide job fairs, speaker series, grand openings, city business assistance, referrals and other similar activities. That committee was formed by the city manager, and that committee is made up of the Business Licensing Department, City Manager's Office, Community Services, Housing Department and the Planning Department. Tonight, we come to bring you the Hawthorne Business Connect. The committee has met several times, and I'm gonna bring up Mr. Chris Palmer from Planning and Ms. Brenda Williams from Community Service, who will present the committee's ideas tonight.
Thank you. New businesses, welcome to the city of Hawthorne. And City Council, welcome to Business Connect. As a business resource collaborative with the intent of leading the effort of assisting business startup and long-term success, you're gonna hear tonight about Business Connect, the welcome package, marketing and branding strategies, and what we want you to know and our available resources.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Brenda Williams. I am from the Community Services Department. Part of our efforts was to identify who we, who we are, HBC, and what our mission is. And as you know, with any organization, there has to be some direction, and so this is our mission statement. Hawthorne Business Connect aims to create an all-encompassing opportunity for businesses to collaborate with the city to create an open line of communication that establishes and maintains economic stability for the city of Hawthorne. And through those efforts, we have, have three major goals, and if you can just see those, is to guide prospective entrepreneurs through the stream, through a streamlined startup process, to help existing businesses navigate the business renewal process, and to provide resources that will help a business reach their maximum profit.
When you join Hawthorne Business Connect, we will offer you a ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate your grand opening. We will invite elected officials, staff and other members of the community to introduce them to your business and services. Hawthorne Cable will also be in attendance to capture the entire event and then broadcast it on our award-winning cable programming and social media. Hawthorne Business Connect will host networking events, and you'll be invited, and businesses will receive a key to the city. Now, this isn't just any key to the city. You'll be able to insert this key into any computer, and it'll unlock an info, a resource of information and open the doors to all that you need and all that Hawthorne has to offer.
And apart, to help us be successful, we have come up with some marketing and branding strategies. One of the brandings is HBC. We have created a logo for our Business Connect efforts, and we will focus on the business package, introduce new businesses to City Council, and also advertises through event sponsorships, social media, local television, coverage, newsletters and more. And the more is whatever you want the more to be. That's good.
Hawthorne Business Connect wants you to know how to get your business started, where you can go and get an application, what's the procedure for obtaining a business license, how long is the process, when does the business license expire, and what do I do to renew? And we'll be able to answer any other pertinent questions that you may have.
Okay, and so some of the resources that we're offering, networking functions hosted by the HBC, quarterly meetings, social events, Business Connect roundtables, grant opportunities, departments, FAQs and contact information from Finance, Planning, Business and Licensing, pre-taped how-to webinars and tips on best practices.
In closing, the staff recommends that due to the lack of staffing capacity to administer a full Chamber of Commerce here at the city of Hawthorne, that the staff move forward with the outlines that were outlined, that were provided to you in the presentation tonight, or that the council directs the city to work with the existing Chamber of Commerce to meet the needs of the local businesses in the city of Hawthorne, or that the City Council agrees to fund and direct staff to publish a request for proposal for an agency to establish and maintain and report on a new Chamber of Commerce for the city of Hawthorne, or the council can provide an alternative. So we have met, we've provided you with our best ideas, and would like for you to provide us with some direction at this time. Thank you.
Awesome presentation. Straight out of a commercial.
Business presentation.
I was like, it was pretty good. All right, any comments, feedback?
Yeah, definitely, feedback, I'm sure. Well, first of all, to your team, Kimberly, thank you to everyone that not only formed the committee but provided and brainstormed some great ideas. I love the name Hawthorne Business Connect. I think this has been something the city has, has needed for a long time with regards to just, you know, holding businesses' hands and bringing them through and helping them through the process, but more importantly, keeping up with their business and their needs and how they could still flourish. It's not just a one-time thing, but they could still flourish by connecting to other means of support, either the state, the Small Business Administration, grants, et cetera, to expand their business. So that's the whole nexus of the formation of a chamber, a business collaborative, and in this case, Business Connect. So I, I would...
So I would like to suggest or recommend that we, as a city entity, have a formation of our own with regards to business. I know that you have here on item number three, the council agrees to fund and direct staff to publish a request for proposal for an agency and to establish and maintain a report on a new chamber. Having said that, where I'm stuck is the RFP, the Request for Proposal, because we are that entity. Do you understand what I'm saying? We don't necessarily, in hindsight, need to go out and make a proposal to someone to come in and provide us that. And I understand the whole staffing and whatnot, but I strongly believe that we need, like, a department that oversees something like this. And we're here in City Hall, and this is accessible, and it could be very much the support that the businesses need. And since we're going to be already hosting a number of events and other job fairs, speaker series, et cetera, it just kind of is a good fit. But I'd like to hear from my colleagues to see what their thoughts are, and then we could go from there. But thank you.
I'll mention something, and I'll pass it on to you. Hopefully, I didn't say something that you were going to say, but I think this is a great idea. I believe that this fills in the vacuum that exists right now in the city when it comes to welcoming businesses in and giving them the supportive information. I think that we should have it within-house. I don't think we should. I believe we shouldn't have to contract with anybody else outside. And this is what I think we should do. Everybody can agree or disagree or feedback or build on this, is that I think we should just ease into this. We've got to see how many businesses you're going to have to deal with. You can have elements from this department, this department activate when somebody's coming in and gauge how busy we're going to be when it comes to this. And at that point, we could decide if we just need a full-time person or two or three because the demand is so large, I think we can ease into it. I know it's tempting, let's get a department, get an office, and have... Yeah, we're sure we can have a welcome booth where they can get information, et cetera, but I think we should ease into it. That's all I'm trying to say. I think that we should. Go ahead, sir.
That's good.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I understand in that recommendation page, you're asking, you're giving four potential options that we can take advantage of. Well, first, actually, I want to thank you guys for the presentation. I think it was spectacular presentation, and I loved all the ideas contained in them. I was very, very impressed, just very proud, you know, to have the opportunity to kind of be a part of the ideas you guys put forward. From the recommendation page that you guys identified for us, I would suggest maybe taking advantage of option one and option two, if that was possible, just my suggestion. Definitely, I would like to ask staff to move forward with the ideas outlined in the presentation. I think you guys came up with some spectacular ideas, and I think executed well with the digital key to the city. You know, there's a lot of things that... A lot of resources you kind of hand businesses in the beginning, and they won't need a lot of subsequent handholding as a result. I would like to suggest that we maybe have like a tab on our website that talks about the Hawthorne Business Connect.
It's already there.
There you go. And whenever possible, you know, with option number two, work with the existing chamber to help facilitate some of the events and activities that you guys identified.
Quick response to that. Well, no, go ahead, Diana.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Wow, I'm thoroughly impressed. What a great presentation. When you guys were giving it, I was like, sign me up. I want my key. It was phenomenal presentation. It looks like a lot of work and thought went into it. I love some of the innovative ideas that you included in this recommendation. And so my recommendation would be to move forward on this. But I would suggest with maybe hiring two people in-house to assist you. I know that one of the busiest areas is the Licensing Department, Permit Department, and I look forward to us being able to increase that department. So I think the work that needs to be done as you guys continue to do this because I believe that once you start this, word's going to spread, and everybody's going to come and want a key to the city that's going to lock all this information. So I think you're going to be really busy, and I just think that going forward, this is a great idea, but I would suggest hiring two people to assist along with the Licensing Permit Department along with this as well.
Quick response? Yeah, I think we need to be careful on hiring two people. It's very... There's a cost involved in that, and once you hire them, it's hard to let them go if there isn't a demand. So we need to be very careful. Budget time is always a critical time for us. And I still think we should see what the demand is based on people we have in-house before we put that on a city manager and staff to try to create the necessary home for them. So we don't know how busy it's going to be. I'm pretty sure we're excited that. We're hoping, but... Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My hat goes off to you guys. Congratulations, and it has to be a high command because in four weeks, you guys develop this proposal. So I have to say thank you, thank you. You know, the direction of Vaughn and all of you participated on this committee have established this guideline for us to create something. I believe maybe if we want to start immediately through this Business Connect, we should probably maybe hire a consultant, okay? Not a staff immediately because we have to come up with a new budget as July 1st, right? To see if we have money there to hire a person to become in-house, a full-time job. So I would recommend for us maybe to hire a consultant to guide you guys into deliver what we want to deliver immediately based on you guys' recommendation on this proposal. I do believe that, yes, we do need a business ambassador, right, to welcome people in Hawthorne and to do more for the business in Hawthorne because we know, you know, there is a lot of desire out there how to help the business in Hawthorne be more prosperous, be more lucrative, so we need to help them out. So I would agree with all, from one to three, all of those combined because, yes, we could involve dialogue with the current Chamber of Commerce, but at the same time, maybe bring a consultant that will help you deliver what you guys have proposed in this and also to begin, you know, creating maybe that position for the near future. Because I think we still have almost six months until July. And then when Vaughn and the finance present our new budget for 2023, 2024, to see if we have enough money to hire one or two people to do everything. But I think for now, I would recommend is a consultant, that we don't have to pay benefits and nothing like that. So to help you guys, because I know you guys are swamped. You have so much job to do, you know? Housing, finance, community service, you know, planning department. So you guys have other jobs to do, and this is an added job. So I would say to hire a consultant is my recommendation.
Anybody else?
I'll go back.
Yes.
Okay. Let's pose the question to you all. You formed the committee. You've been working collectively to get the breakdown of the objective. What would be your opinion on a consultant? The reason I say this is because there's been often times when the work is already being done or has been done in various departments, and they have the know-how and have been doing it. However, there's been consultants that have been outsourced for whatever reason when the information's already available to us. So it's just one of those, just, you know, direct questions to you all. And it's okay if you tell us, yes, we need, you know, maybe to hire a consultant, or no, let's give it a couple of more weeks, maybe a couple more months to just, you know, really tie this down and get a procedure, maybe, something of a procedure guideline. First. I don't know. You tell me.
I mean, the group hasn't really spoken as to a general consideration. But just speaking for myself, I would say it would be wise to actually consider the priorities of the city. What level is this number-one priority? Is it number-six priority? In conjunction with everything we're already doing for the city. And if you find it on the lower-end scale, then we would need to hire someone to assist us if we want to launch this program and be successful at it.
Okay. Sure.
And my experience working with consultants is that consultants always need help anyway. So, you know, hiring a consultant on a temporary basis is going to put us back to where we are now. You know, I think hiring a person or people full-time, they'll be on board, they'll learn the system, they'll have time to learn business license, they'll have time to learn the planning processes, and then they'll be able to collaborate with economic development whenever that comes aboard. So that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Well, let's go. Can we just... Four of them?
Actually, there are more. If the team would just stand up or wave their hand and let us know, because Rebecca's over there as well. In terms of consultants, I do agree with Chris. They would have to get on board to understand the inner workings of the City of Hawthorne. And I think that you have people right here in the City of Hawthorne that have a level of understanding of what businesses look like, what they should look like. And I would suggest that you tap into those resources. You already have the resources. You have the talent. So now it's just time to take a look at your existing staff to see what they can do.
Want to make a comment, too?
Hi, I'm Chantel Dixon from Business Licensing. And I also agree with Brenda and Chris. We actually have the talent here to do it, so I think that we would have to nurture it a little bit and see where it goes. And if it's not up to what you guys think it should be, then we could actually hire a consultant. But like Kimberly said, it all depends on where your priority lies with this. So we can do it. We've come up with the marketing. We've come up with all the ideas without the help of a consultant. So we can actually wrangle it here, but we just need your support to do it.
Did I make a comment?
Thank you.
I asked first.
Oh, you haven't? Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have to say again, you know, I congratulate all of you because my recommendation to the consultant was not to give you guys more work because I know you're overworked. You've got a lot of projects in your play right now, especially the housing department. We have a lot of issue going on. A lot of, not issue, but a lot of projects that is challenged. It was not to reinvent the wheel, but the consultant was to help you guys launch the program, okay? Just to take the task about launching the program, maybe, you know, with the help of all of you. So I'm not saying, but if you guys are willing to step up and do more extra work, it's fine with me because we'll save money. My concern is, right now, it's already February 1st next week, and we know the new budget is going to begin July 1st, so we're going to start talking about budgets. So from now until July, so if you guys can hold all that load of the new job because this probably, I'm telling you, because what you guys have proposed is going to have a buzz out there. So you guys might be inundated with calls and appointments and to come and talk to. So who's going to step up and do all that work? That's my concern. Because I don't want you guys to be neglecting your other duties because this is a new venture that the city council have imposed on you guys. And Vaughn, the city manager, have to be, you know, having the rule of measuring how much you guys are doing. So I don't want you guys to be stressed. That's my only thing that I was saying. The consultant was to help you guys launch the thing. And then July 1st, when Vaughn, all of us come together and say, okay, we have some money, we can put staff in place, and then go from there. That's my...
Okay. Okay, so I want to thank you guys also for presenting. And I think that was the perfect way that Councilwoman English approached it, is asking you guys what you guys thought. Okay, sometimes we try to say, hey, you know, I think we need this and that. But I also understand my colleagues' concerns of, you know, trying to do what we can to make this successful and coordinate with you, either getting a couple of employees, one, or a consultant. So that's the only reason that that comes up. We know you guys have done so many other things. And then you guys are, you know, don't not be afraid in telling us, hey, we need this, we need that. But not a concern, but I think what's important here is the coordination aspect. Somebody knocks on a door, gets the city manager, gets the call, or one of us or anybody. So we've got to activate the group. And then...
Business Connect.
Yeah, the Business Connect. We have to activate the group. There's like, this person is responsible for this, this person... I guess the question to the group is, I already know the answer. I know you guys can do it. But if you could just vocalize, how quickly can you respond and get things done so that this will not deter businesses from coming because things are slow like in other cities? We're pretty quick, but this Business Connect, how quickly can you activate, and how efficient and quickly can you get these things done? Do you have a response for that?
I think we'd have to come back at a later time with a better response for that.
Mr. City Manager?
Absolutely. I understand your question. What I would ask is let staff come back with a staff report with a timeline of protocols and procedures for this Business Connect. Tonight's presentation was the buy-in. Looks like we have a buy-in. So let us bring back a timeline on those questions you asked, and we can review it at that time to see if council would like to move forward with recommendations from staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's give a round of applause. Great work. And all the supporting staff that put work into that. Thank you. Good ideas. Thank you all guys for feeding... So we're going to receive the presentation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second, please vote to receive the presentation.
Thank you.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Madam City Clerk, please read item nine into the record.
Item nine, Bridge of Hope Community Housing Site Security Reject and Republish Request for Proposal. Recommended motion. Staff recommends that the city council reject all proposals received on January 5th, 2023, proposal opening date, and authorize the director of housing to re-advertise for proposals with a return date of February 14th, 2023.
I move?
Thank you.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
For the record, that was Councilmember Patterson's second.
Yeah. Okay. Item 10, is that a... Okay, item 10?
Item 10, Bridge of Hope Community Housing Site Operator Reject and Republish Request for Proposal. Recommended motion. Staff recommends that the city council reject all of the proposals received on December 8th, 2022, proposal opening date, and authorize the director of housing to re-advertise for requests for proposals with a return date of February 14th, 2023.
I move? Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
There we go.
Item 11, Homeless Services Presentation. So our general matters item is this item 11. There'll be a presentation on this item. Madam Clerk, can you read it into the record?
Item 11, Homeless Services Presentation. Recommended motion, received presentation.
Excellent. Can we proceed with the presentation, Ms. Medina?
Good evening, council members. Oh, it's not showing up on screen. Well, Brenda messes with that. Good evening, council... Well, Brenda messes with that. Good evening, council members, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem English Reyes, city manager. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to provide an update regarding our homeless program, uh, department. Uh, my name is Dulce Medina. For those that don't know me, I am the program manager overseeing all of the homeless services within the city in collaboration with St. Margaret Center. I don't know why it's not.
It's not showing here.
It froze.
If possible, we can proceed with presentation. Uh, council does have a copy of the, the PowerPoint, and I have additional copies of the PowerPoint with me.
Wonderful.
Okay.
So, um, I'm here tonight to provide all of you an update regarding our homeless department. Um, the agenda is going to be, I'm going to try and be quite brief. Uh, we're going to be reviewing the homeless count from 2020 to 2022. Uh, the demographics for last year, um, our housing, emergency housing vouchers that took place, and, thank you. Wonderful. Our, uh, housing, emergency housing vouchers, uh, from 2022, and then Hawthorne on the move. So starting with our homeless count, uh, the, the homeless count has taken, uh, part for several years. I've been part of the homeless count here in the city of Hawthorne for the last two years, including this year. And, uh, the graph that I'm providing.
Dulce, excuse me one second.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, put the mic towards you.
Oh, sorry.
Please, please, thank you.
And excuse my voice, I am a little bit under the weather, so I'm going to try and speak as loud as I can. Um, so the homeless count has taken place for several years. I've been part of the, the homeless count here in the city for two years, including this year. The slide that you're, uh, viewing right now shows, uh, LASSA in blue, uh, the Los Angeles, um, uh, Homeless Service Authority. Numbers that have been provided by the county on an annual basis since 2020. In 2021, the homeless count was, uh, canceled due to the pandemic. And, uh, last year, uh, you could see the, the numbers that the county provided were of 173. You do see a decline, uh, uh, every year. Uh, and then, uh, the orange bar shows all the services that the Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program has provided to individuals. And those, uh, services include from providing a water, uh, you know, dispensing water, food, clothing, behavioral health services, uh, walk-in shelter services, interim housing, permanent housing, just an overall, um, uh, services that we provide to individuals enrolled in our program here in the city. And then the green, uh, from 2020 to 2022 shows all the individuals enrolled in our program. So last year, we had 220 unhoused individuals that are receiving individual services from case management, uh, to shelter, to, uh, permanent housing, uh, in our Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program. Yes.
Are you okay with this, just after you present the slide?
Of course, of course, definitely.
Just so that we don't go too far along and forget our, our concern?
Definitely, yes.
So, um, the blue one was LASSA, uh, providing services?
No, the blue one represents the homeless count numbers. You know, every year, there's a homeless count, so.
Got it.
The, correct.
Uh, so the orange was services provided by?
By our office, my office, the Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program.
And the green was the Hawthorne, what?
Our office as well. Those are all our individuals that are actually enrolled in our program.
Awesome. And, uh, so you have 408, uh, case, uh, incidents of service? And then you have 24, 25, 2,425 in that year, uh, in the, in the 2021?
Those are services. So for 2020, 21, those are the services that we provided. And, uh, you can see, uh, an highly increased number of services, because that's when the EHB, uh, program was implemented by LASSA. And that's the Emergency Housing Program, which, uh, required a lot of dedicated, uh, document readiness and application process submitted to various housing authorities.
And can we, uh, can you remind us when the homeless task force, the unhoused homeless task force started here in Hawthorne, please?
The homeless task force actually started, um.
2017.
2017. I've been part of the, the, uh, department, uh, since 2020.
A quick question, only because it doesn't appear here, and since the inception of the homeless task force in 2017 till now, this is not a reflection on the city, it's economics and everything. How has the, uh, the count fluctuated or increased or decreased?
It actually has decreased. I remember when I was first hired back in November of 2020, my previous colleague, uh, the numbers that were reflected were a little bit over 300, between 310, I believe, to 325. So you could tell, uh, the pattern. Every year it has decreased, and you see the, the largest decrease from 2021 to 2022. And it definitely has to do with the increased collaboration that we have here in the city, not just with, uh, the Hawthorne PD, but other entities in the city that are assisting us with housing. You're welcome.
That's great.
And also Dulce, can you just tell how many people that you, uh, put in, uh, permanent housing in 2022, please?
I'm, I'm, I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
We're excited.
The next slide, uh, is the homeless count that's going to be taking place actually tomorrow. It's going to be held at the Memorial, uh, Park Center. Um, starting at 6 o'clock registration, you can see the links. Uh, we have a total of about 55, uh, volunteers already registered, ready to go, non-stop calls. Dulce, what can we do? So I have no problem that it's going to be another successful homeless count this year for the city of Hawthorne.
I'll be there.
Any questions? So the, the next slide shows, uh, the demographics that we were able to compile for last year from January through December. Uh, we broke it down as much as possible, and this, these demographics come not just from LASSA, but from my own demographics that we started collecting for all our individual enrolled clients. So as you could see, our highest population are males. We had 128 males and 92 females. The age category, our youngest client was 15 last year, and our eldest, uh, client was 78, that we just currently housed in November, permanently housed. That was our eldest, uh, senior client. Our race and ethnicity, you could see that our three highest categories, uh, the, it's made up from the black African-American population, the Latinx community, and followed by the white Caucasian population. Um, we are still, uh, gathering certain information. I am very aggressive in collecting this data. Uh, the staff are being trained to make sure that all our intakes, uh, all the information is gathered, so we could gather all this information accordingly, not just for the county, but for the city. Uh, for our income category, um, you can see that a lot of clients, uh, most of our clients are receiving general relief assistance, uh, from the county, the state. Um, the second category are social security. Most of our seniors are receiving SSDI or social security income, and that's how they're supporting themselves. And, um, one of, uh, the second highest, um, which is somewhat surprising, because not a lot of people believe that homeless folks are actually working and holding a part-time and full-time job. And as you could see in this slide, 42 individuals enrolled in our program are actually holding a, a part-time to full-time job. Uh, and they are required, uh, in order to continue to be enrolled in our program, to provide, uh, income verification, pay stubs every other week. And that is, that's not only to, uh, continue them enrolled in our program, but it's also to get them ready, uh, document readiness, to provide them interim housing or permanent housing. That is definitely a required of every housing authority. Uh, behavioral health services, you can see that, yes, our, our highest behavioral substance use is alcohol for a lot of our clients. Um, drug use is the second, and, uh, the third is, um, uh, both, both alcohol and drug. We do, we have noticed an increase within our youth, that they're coming in with, uh, they're not becoming homeless just because they're on drugs. They were actually, uh, asked to leave home because of their sexual preference, and that's what led them into, uh, certain substance use and abuse. So, uh, every, uh, case is different, every case is different, uh, from trauma to alcohol use. Uh, but we're, we're attempting to record all the services, uh, individually. Um, we've also been very successful in capturing, this data has never been captured, at least from all the records that I've collected. Uh, the 5150 holds, uh, provided from our Hawthorne PD Met Team, we, we have a very strong collaboration. And these seven clients were actually placed on a 5150 hold by our Hawthorne PD Met Team and the Department of Mental Health Services. So this is new data that we're, uh, collecting, so we know how to do proper follow-up. Because in, uh, compared to other cities, when a 5150, uh, client is placed on hold, we no longer hear from them. They don't have any way to reach, uh, their, their social worker or their case manager. And in this case, with the collaboration of the Hawthorne PD Met Team, we have a licensed clinical social worker that stays in contact with that individual, which makes our case management process a lot easier. Um, our Hawthorne PD referrals, I definitely want, um, to make a point of this. The, our partnership was, uh, aggressively, uh, started back in March of '22, and we have received 78 referrals from them. And what does that mean? Uh, it means that they've actually brought them to our, uh, homeless services department. They found certain clients for us that we were looking for, hiding under the freeway or for whatever reason. But the Hawthorne PD team has made it an effort to bring those clients, find those clients for us, and make that connection. And so a lot, because of that partnership, we have been able to, um, house clients in an interim facet and also a permanent housing status.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Go ahead. You still had, you were going to?
No, I'm done.
You were at the, okay, so this is, if, I'm sorry. Oh, I have a three things in the note.
Okay.
I'm excited about it, too.
Okay, I just wanted to know, do you have stats on, um, veterans and sex trafficking?
Um, that's a very excellent question. We're actually just now this year starting to collect the sex trafficking. I know for a lot of our domestic violence cases, uh, we're starting to collect that. Um, and I'm trying to work with LASSA, our county, to assure that they could do a breakdown for me. So I don't have that information today, but I will definitely get that to you. And then with our vets, I did not include that, but yes, we do. And our percentage of vets is actually not as high. We ha, we have, when, I remember the number clearly, it's eight vets that we've actually, uh, have on our, um, uh, data collection. And those vets are being referred to St. Margaret Center because they have a grant that provides assistance for all our vets, and they're housing them immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, so you're collect, this is information you've collected?
Yes, this is all from our Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program.
Um, do you have, uh, do you ask them the general question, wha, what led you to homelessness? Okay, I lost my job, or you know what, I just did a lot of the bottle, or, or, uh, I had a situation, you know? Or you can visibly tell, they don't give a reason, it's kind of because there's something going wrong with their mental health? Do you have a, do you ask them that? Is that something you could maybe ask, just so that we know how to gear our response as a city? What do you think?
Definitely. That's a question that's part of our intake form, that's part of the counseling form, that's part of, uh, all LASSA forms that we collect. Uh, it depends on, you know, it's a complex, uh, question to answer, because every case is different. As I mentioned with the youth, some youth become homeless, not because, no one chooses to be homeless, at least from all the data that I've collected. And I know, uh, I'm very familiar, um, and, and know 99% of the homeless here in the city. They know me by name, they, they, they know who I am. Um, and I can, uh, honestly tell you that none of them chose to be homeless, is because of a certain trauma, um, like our youth, which has definitely impacted all this data, is that, uh, most of them were asked to leave their home because of a blended family, their sexual orientation, and that led them to become, to, to be users. Uh, there are some that have lost their homes. As we, we, you, we noticed an increase, uh, during the pandemic year. Uh, they were evicted, even though there was a freeze on evictions, people and families were still being evicted. And, uh, Brenda and, uh, our city manager, um, can attest that the families that I've housed, uh, some of them were because they were evicted during the pandemic.
Dulce?
Yes.
So do you have a category, say, a, a number or a category that tells us, uh, of those who don't get help financially? Those that don't want to cooperate with your efforts out there? People that we, that are unknown to us without any information, because they don't want to interact with you and don't want to participate in any information gathering?
Uh, yes, and in the slide, I think you could probably see some of the pending ones and some of the zero for income category. Those are, I'm paying, um, very close attention. They're not going to be meeting with any case coordinator, they're going to be meeting with me directly. Because, uh, uh, what that means is that I'm very aggressive with the fact that if you are wanting help from this office, you need to meet us halfway. If we are looking to house you in a shelter space, uh, whether it be interim or permanent housing, you need to meet us halfway. And if they refuse, and there's other agencies that are willing to work, unfortunately, with folks that are not willing to cooperate with us.
This is awesome. This is awesome information. Uh, just a super small, uh, piece of feedback. Uh, Mr. City Manager, can we just avoid using the word Latinx here, please? Uh, when, any reports or any, any reports from staff, please? I think, uh, we just, those are other groups that want to use that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, I don't understand it.
That's, that's the term that LA County is being, is using now, so it's reflected in all our case management.
But when we present just the information to our group, uh, just, Mr. City Manager, it's okay, great, great work, but this is for the city manager, actually.
Thank you.
I just want to stay away from that. Emergency housing voucher, go ahead.
And, um, okay, so the next slide. So, uh, the emergency housing voucher, uh, for those that, um, are not aware, began back in June of 2021. The, uh, Los Angeles, um, uh, Homeless Housing Authority went ahead and started matching individuals that are in our county case management system, CLARITY. They started matching those with severe chronic homelessness. And, uh, LOCKDA, which is the Los Angeles County Housing Authority, went ahead and took those cases on. These, they began the process of, uh, housing domestic violence cases and tho, and families. So in June of 2021, our office, uh, the Hawthorne Homeless Coordination Program began, uh, submitting applications for those clients that were individually matched to various housing authorities. And, uh, social worker, a case manager, we had to follow up with application and document readiness. So from January, uh, through December of 2022, I am very pleased, uh, to let you know that we've had housed 37 permanent Hawthorne residents in permanent housing. We have, uh, I have 19 actually right now on the docket, uh, looking for apartments that I'm, uh, going out with them, looking for apartments. Uh, they're ready to go. We just have to find, uh, an owner, a property management that are willing to take their, their housing voucher. So, uh, two of them were actually permanently housed, uh, within the city of LA. 21 of them were housed in LA County Housing Authority, and 14 of them were housed here within our city of, of Hawthorne.
Congratulations.
That's 12 to 15% of the numbers that we've had.
That's 15%, and I'm thrilled, because our numbers are growing. Uh, like I said, I have 19 pending. And, uh, it sounds by the care coordination meeting I attended this morning, that the county's going to open the EHB voucher program again. They did not give us a date, but it looks like it's, you know, going to be reopened quite soon, and so I'm looking forward to that process.
This is more than other cities have done around us.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Well, just, just to let you know, and I, Kimberly, the director, won't, won't let me lie, I think, uh, the city received 62, 68, uh, EHB vouchers. And, uh, just alone from our office, we've housed 37. So that's wonderful.
And Dulce, you should tell them how is, how difficult it is to house somebody.
Well, it, it's a process. The process began back in June of 2021, and we're just now, um, barely housing 37. Even though it's a good number for us, uh, it's still, uh, not the number that I would want to see, because I would love to see 100 already, uh, for the city of Hawthorne, because most of our clients are very compliant, because they know how important it is. Um, the application itself is between 28 to 48 pages long, depending on the housing authority you're dealing with. Uh, the housing authority here in, uh, Hawthorne, it's, uh, tends to be the easiest one and the most smooth process, maybe because I'm here in the city and it's a lot easier. But, uh, it's about 48 pages long to work with LA County and the housing authority in the city. Uh, on, um, on top of all the documents that we need to attach to that application, um, and case notes for that client.
Councilwoman?
I just wanted to say thank you for your work, um, you and, and your staff. Um, you guys are doing incredible work, and we know at this moment in time, um, housing is a very important issue, not only for the city of Hawthorne, but for all of our cities. So any direction of being able to house anybody is such a blessing and a pleasure, um, for our city to be in that position. So thank you and your staff for doing. So thank you and your staff for doing that great work, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is permanent housing, correct?
This is permanent.
It's not just temporary?
Not temporary, that, our goal is permanent housing. And I wanted to end on a good note, just so you could see some of the faces that we've been able to permanently house. You can see some of the folks, all of them have signed a media release form. They are jumping for joy, they're receiving keys, they're opening their door. Some of these clients have been unhoused from one year to ten years and ten years plus. And so the, the, the one, the second one, the, the gentleman that's jumping for joy, he continues to strive in the program. He was housed back in May of, of, of last year, and he's actually getting his AA now. So I'm, I'm very happy for him.
So I have one quick question.
Yes.
So after they're permanently housed, the case managers, do they still continue to work with them? And if they do, how long?
The case management, per county rules, per LASSA rules, we're only supposed to follow up with them one month. But as Brenda knows, I, I continue to follow up, you know, a year because some of these clients, it's overwhelming for them. They come back to me every month telling me, Dulce, how do you pay a bill? So it's a process of enrolling them and referring them to the proper agency on how to keep up. And they need to hold themselves accountable and learn the, the, the process of responsibility once again. So per, per the county, we're supposed to follow up with them only a month, but I'm, I'm, I'm here for them.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I, I just want to say, real quick, thank you, Dulce, for your efforts and the work that you've done along with your staff. If, if the audience or anyone hasn't been to see the center that we have placed behind the Memorial Center, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity to just take a look to see how the city's working hard to address our homeless and make efforts to get them housed. Thank you for that. I just wanted to just throw in my two cents, real quick, you know, I work for the city of Los Angeles full time, and in my building where I work, LASSA has an office there, Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority. And there's a lot of staff, and what their task to do is to go out into the community and reach the homeless to see if they would be willing to take services. And you'd be surprised, and I only say this because we're very fortunate as a city, of, of, a city here, the city of Hawthorne, the size that we are, and how we, how quickly we could address something versus the city of Los Angeles. It's, it's, I mean, it's just crazy trying to, to deal with ten million people in the city of Los Angeles, fifteen council offices with two thousand and eighty thousand people in each council district, including businesses. So just, you know, what you're doing here alone is, is a heavy hand, too. But I'm glad that we're able to address things quickly and get you the resources and the tools and the things that you need, and commend you on that. And good luck with your homeless count. I'm taking a break this, this year. I've been doing the homeless count since twenty thirteen, since twenty thirteen. And so I'm gonna sit back and wait, wait for the numbers to come in, huh? No, you're not going with me?
I'll handhold you, don't worry about it. It's gonna, it's gonna be a smooth process, thank you for your participation.
I'm limited in my walking, so.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
This, okay, really quick, this particular slide, just wanted to let you know that this particular owner in South Central took it upon himself to basically work with not too many case managers and social workers. He was willing to provide all his sixteen units for the unhoused, and out of those sixteen units, the city of Hawthorne took twelve. So we're wonderful that all these clients were housed. I continue to do side visits, they're thriving. And, you know, there's, there's really good people out there that, once you start the collaboration process, and they know you're trying to make a difference and make a difference in someone's life, they're gonna step up. And this particular owner continues to do that work, and, and I feel very blessed to, to have him in, in our side. And those are.
Do you have final information on the page twelve, or?
No, that's just our, just our contact information. The homeless count is taking place tomorrow, all of you are welcome at the Memorial Park Center, and that's it. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Sure, 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 sure.
Dulce, I have to say, you know, my head goes off to you, okay? Because like I said, you know, even in my past, I tried to help homeless. And you know that we belong to the, the South Bay Cock, the homeless task force.
Yes, yes.
And I know the work you've been doing every single day, and, and how they are very proud of Hawthorne for all this accomplishment. And it's thanks to your effort, and like I was trying to, for you to portray, that it's not easy to deal with these unhoused individuals, especially to deal with the bureaucracy of some of these agencies. Like you said, you know, forty pages, you know, twenty pages. So, and you has been persistent and, and stayed there with, with these unhoused people. And your labor have, you know, produced fruits, and that is amazing. All this, this is what people have to listen. And, and I would love for us to put this on our website, on, on a city webpage, because you know how a lot of people sometime out there, you know, on the social media saying the city's not doing nothing for the homeless. So, so we need to show them that actually we do care about the homeless. And we have individuals like you, like Brenda over there at the community service, that and the police department dealing with these unhoused individuals every single day. And you are going beyond your call of duty to make sure that they're comfortable and finding houses. So again, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
To the chair.
Okay, final comments?
Do you think that we could give the gentleman a certificate of appreciation for taking in those twelve residents?
Yes.
No, I agree, I concur, absolutely.
He's, he's going to love it.
Yeah.
We would love to give him a proclamation.
Can we do a formal proclamation to, for him and present it to him?
Give a proclamation wherever you want.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sounds good, let's do it.
Yeah.
Absolutely, this merits that, absolutely.
Thank you, it was a pleasure, thank you.
Good recording with you, Gracias, thank you. All right. Make a, I make a motion to accept the presentation, seconded by Councilwoman Montero. Please vote, let's just proceed. We have a call.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. Mayor Protem Angie Reyes is absent.
Okay. Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar.
Item twelve, Hawthorne Boulevard Mobility Improvement Project, Phase Two, City Project Number twenty three dash zero one, out to bid. Item thirteen, amend the current blanket purchase order for Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Item fourteen, community cleanup event. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items twelve through fourteen?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Let's, everybody put their votes in, we're waiting for Mayor Protem. Just go ahead and put your votes in. She was able to hear everything.
The vote on reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Can you please read the city attorney's consent calendar?
Item fifteen, deny claim of Riley C. Walker. Item sixteen, deny claim of Maria Vera. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar, may I have a motion to approve items fifteen and sixteen?
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
The voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
So I have a discussion items. I have an item on the agenda, item number seventeen, that is to provide employment opportunities for the homeless unhoused individuals here in the city of Hawthorne. And actually, we had a report, and this is, this arose from a discussion with my colleagues, with new councilwoman Katrina Manning, and with my other colleagues at some point within the last year or two. And this goes, there's different reasons why people are homeless. There's some because, like, as you noted, she mentioned and went through the list of things. And sometimes it's simply because individuals do not have a employment, it's hard for them to have employment. So we want to, I wanted to make the suggestion, and I would like for the city manager to see the probability or the, the possibility of structuring a program where those that are unhoused or homeless here in the city of Hawthorne can get a job through a nonprofit, but working with the city, either cleaning up landscape, being cleaning up, maintenance, or other types of tasks that would be appropriate and productive for, for them in being able to earn some type of paycheck, some type of, not a stipend, some type of paycheck. And this program would be managed by that nonprofit, not the city. I think it's, it'd be most appropriate that a nonprofit, somebody, a group that could coordinate that South Bay WIP might be a good opportunity there. That could be, well, I'd like for the city manager to see if it's appropriate for them, or we might have another local nonprofit based in the city of Hawthorne that could do this. Whoever's the most, whoever's be able to undertake it and manage something of this nature. But it's definitely to coordinating with, they might need somebody from staff at least to coordinate whatever the effort is for that day. But if you could, Mr. City Manager, if you could, just kind of look into this, please. But of course, I'm gonna open it up for comment, I'm not, I'm not finished yet.
Absolutely, I will study item seventeen and report back.
And I had a discussion with Councilwoman Manning, so go ahead, ma'am.
So Local two fifty, Local four sixteen are two unions that have offered to train residents, to train them and pay them while they're being trained, pay them medical. And so they were willing to come and do a presentation to talk about their training, job services. Also, SEIU is another organization. So these are organizations have reached out to me requesting a presentation because they want to help our homeless people get hired and get good paying jobs. So I can work with the city manager and bringing forth that presentation to the city.
So I think that's a great suggestion, and I would like to consider these parallel efforts. Parallel efforts because, you know, that's a specific trade that's being inactive, and then there, this other effort over here for those who just want to be able to subscribe for a period of time, earning money, that they can actually not have to panhandle or.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's parallel efforts, but absolutely, I support that.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the idea is great, but again, you know, we, we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, right? Because the South Bay WIP is the Workforce Investor Board that has been training people to go back to work, and even the homeless people. Because we were at the, remember, in October, we went to that lunch or dinner, that there was a homeless guy that now is making fifty dollars an hour, right? Because they retrained him. So South Bay Workforce Ambassador Board received grants from the federal government, from the state, from the county, to put people back to work. So we need to utilize them because, you know, we are part of their coalition. So I think Vaughn can contact, you know, Jen Vogel or the One Stop Center to, you know, give them that idea, and then they can massage and tell us what to do. But there is already in place an organization that, they're nonprofit, right? And they've been doing this work for at least for thirty years. So we can, we, so like I said, we do need to reinvent the wheel, we just need to get the connection there because they're supposed to be the agency representing Hawthorne to put people back to work and retrain people that have lost their jobs, that are homeless, and they train them, send them to school for free even, and put them to work. You know, like internships in, in unions, in, in, in some other business, so. Vaughn, this South Bay WIP, I think is your first stop, so you don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Oh, well, okay, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna respond to that respectfully, of course. Again, that's another parallel effort. So we have three parallel efforts that we're discussing here. We have the effort that Councilwoman Manning mentioned with regards to Local two fifty and some of these other trade. Hey, we're not gonna unite South Bay WIP, we don't want to take away that opportunity, let's consider that a, a parallel effort. And then you have the South Bay WIP that invests long term with these, with people who need to, either homeless, unhoused, or people who just are not able to get a job, that's a long term effort. This is a specific trade effort. The one I'm talking is a more immediate impact where people who are literally here in our area that register and are put to work within a week doing something where they're able to make some, some money. I think, I'm not taking, I'm actually considering these three parallel efforts that I don't think necessarily are intermingling, but they exist and are options in our whole palette of services. So I'd still like to pursue the, that.
Through the chair.
Sure.
One thing that we have to be careful because we don't want to put in the position of liability. Because when you put people back to work, you have to have them, all these workings come, liability insurance, all these are the things that South Bay WIP already cover for us because we paid those fees. So they the one that actually should be doing the work. I understand what you're saying, and I agree completely, but we have to be careful because you cannot just put somebody cleaning up the park or clean up the street. You have to have, and Mr. Kim can tell you, liability and is an issue when it comes down to try to employ people that it's not under the city umbrella.
And, okay.
Because, you know, I'm just saying, because, you know, I, I, I'm a business person, I have staff, I have employees. And, and the South Bay WIP supposed to represent the city of Hawthorne to create job for unhousing, people have lost their job, retrain them. So that's the agency we should be able to work with. So, so our liability and workings come, all this stuff should not be playing into our general fund.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
And I appreciate you highlighting that, and again, these are three parallel efforts. And this, the one I'm referring, it's a more immediate solution. And the solution is solved, we will not be the ones doing the hiring and offering. That's why I asked, that's why I'm asking for a nonprofit to govern this and to establish this. A nonprofit that's, whether it's the South Bay WIP having this as a particular effort that they manage, or another nonprofit that has thought this through and has done the work for us so that we don't incur that liability. So we could, we got three things that we could, that you could look into, Mr. City Manager. And absolutely, still make sure that this is plausible, what I'm referring to. Mr. City Attorney, my colleagues are correct, let's just look at all that just to see if we can do this. But it'd be great if we could try to make something happen. So we have a palette of services, and so we're doing what we have to do. Numbers are reducing, people are being housed in permanent housing, we have temporary housing, and now we have, so people have been trained in the trades, carpentry or plumbing or whatever it is.
Nursing.
Nursing, and.
All sorts of things.
We have people getting high tech jobs or more, even like more managerial business type jobs over here. And people who need to work and don't want to be just asking for money and don't want to be, want to move away from that situation. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
Panhandling, a joint item with Councilwoman Reyes English about panhandling, and we talked about it last meeting, and it's just, it's not a nice, or we just want to make sure that, you know, people aren't walking in the middle of the street, people are not making people's dining experiences difficult. And some of the things that we talked about here might be solutions, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So just going back to my initial request to look into the possibilities legally, that is remedies that the city has with regards to addressing panhandling, but more importantly, the aggressive panhandling that's happening where you see folks that are coming to your car while you're at the light or at a stop sign or an off ramp, an on ramp. I, I, I was looking particularly at Ocean Gate and, and Ocean Gate and, what is that, Rosecrans? Near South Bay Ford, they're coming out into the intersection at that four way stop light. And then also the intersection of Imperial and Hawthorne Boulevard. They're at Starbucks, and when they stop at the lights, they're jumping in front of your cars, they're coming to your doors. your cars, they're coming to your doors. Now, to me, this is a safety concern because you could be distracted, you could be looking down for whatever reason, and you take off because, you know, everybody, cars are moving, and to your behold, you know, you hit someone that shouldn't be there, right, in the first place. So I know we have legal confidential, I know that, you know, there's still further discussion, and I know that we gave some directive to our police to look into this as well. I just want to make sure that we're really pressing on the safety factor here. It's not so much that, that, you know, I, I know there's need, right? And I know that we are really good as a city and myself individually to provide that, you know, to those that are in need. But what I don't want is someone getting hurt, and that's my concern, that's my sole And we need to address it, and, and the only way we could address it is to let folks know that it's not allowed, it's not acceptable here in the city of Hawthorne, to be approaching people, whether you're at the bank, I mean, that's, that's another, you know, scary, scary situation to be in, especially for, for women, female, females that are stopping by for an ATM real quick and, you know, unpredictables. So I want to just address that, but if, if there's some way that we could initially provide maybe some type of PSA, some type of notice, letting the general community know, we might not have a law behind it, an ordinance that, that provides us a general municipal code. However, I want to tread lightly just to bring to the attention that it's not allowable, and then ultimately look to do something to where we, we are pressing policy and we are pressing, you know, a, a fine. And I think it needs to be a hefty fine just so that folks get it. If, if, if it's a, you know, one time heavy fee, great, you know, I'm sure it'll, it'll, they'll be discouraged, right, to not do it again. And maybe they could find some other ways to do some fundraising at a safer venue, safer location that could then, you know, have a participation through the right means, whether it be, you know, a scheduled event, a flyer, you know, things like this.
Okay, so I'll speak and then I'll give, pass the floor on to Councilwoman Manning. So the purpose for us putting this on for discussion is to let you guys know that we're still on top of it. We've gotten calls from the community and we're concerned, we see it, and they've sent us over, this is happening here, go take a look, and it's disturbing, they're scams, sometimes they're scams. People are claiming that, you know, they're, you know, that their, their mom has been dead for like a whole year, and these ladies are like collecting money for, you know, same picture, been out there for like almost a year, these two young ladies that are walking through, you know what I'm talking about, right? And then also, I mean, I don't, I'm not trying to make light of it, but you, that's awful that people are kind of exploiting, and there's the, the gypsies that are playing the violin and just getting money for some, you know, scams. So we received a legal confidential, we're looking it over, we're coming up with ideas, and the last thing we want to tell our community is that no, you know, there's limitations. We're going to find a way of enforcing this. But I also agree on Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tem Reyes English has suggested a PSA will be in order right now. Let's start with that. Let's warn our community of the different scams that are out there, chief. You know, the, the, the guy with the violin, and you know, wow, he's an excellent violinist, and I think I call it, hey you, and then he put down the violin, it was still playing, right? It's like, what the heck are you doing? And then, what, me? And then, oh, he forgot, and he went back, oh. You know what I'm talking about? You know, or these other scams, beware. And maybe we could add like the stuff where people get calls to the whole thing. So I think a PSA, if you, chief, real quick, chief, could you just come up to the podium? In conjunction with our city hall and our concerns, do you think you could put a list of, maybe group, group the concerns, maybe the scams, the telephone scams will be a separate item, but then like these things that we see with the panhandlers, could we come up with some type of plan that kind of we could let people know, hey, be careful how you give your, you know?
Of course, working in conjunction with all the other city departments, I think we can come up with some bullet points and build out from that point moving forward to get the appropriate number of PSAs out there.
That's it. That was the Councilwoman.
Oh, I was going to say, could we put a PSA on our digital media?
Absolutely. Don't you think once we, he comes back with the things and then just have separate ones, right? Okay. We got so many ways we could get the message out.
And through the chat, actually, the last time you mentioned something very good, it was to put some, some posters, some signs on the entry of Hawthorne, all the, all the entries of Hawthorne say, you know, panhandler is illegal, the fine is say a thousand dollar if you cut to do.
Either with the actual physical signs if we're going to enforce, because we have to have a notice coming into the city.
Yeah, exactly.
Legally, hey, I didn't see anything, well, coming into the city, we had one.
All, all the entries of our city.
And then the digital billboard.
Yeah. Let's run a billboard we have on Hawthorne and Crenshaw.
So if my council colleagues can hear, see what we saw on the legal confidential, and then come up with ideas so we could pass them along to the chief, but, Mr. City Manager, through the chief, can we task you with coming up with the bullet points to see like the PSAs that we can generate?
Absolutely. Echoing Chief Tomatani, yes, we'll work on that with each department, and we'll get together several PSAs addressing all the issues spoke about tonight.
We have good people here in the city of Hawthorne that are working hard, and we don't want them to be exploited. Okay, item nineteen, Councilmember Montero, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the reason that this discussion item is, is, is in here for us to discuss is because we have two things in our books. One is, is, is a resolution that speak about a term limit and, and, and maybe eight years for the commission, and then we have an ordinance that speaks about four years. So, so the reason that I ask Robert Kim, our city attorney, to bring this item for us to discuss and give him clear directive and ideas, what actually this council want about the commission? Because there is a, there is a perception of that, that we're going to fire commissioners. I don't want people to think about that, that we're not going to fire no commissioners. And we want the commissioners to continue to do the outstanding job that they've been doing for this, you know, for twenty years or for thirty years, because they have been a servants of the city, and we have to commend them for their volunteer, because like Mrs. Kyle Orner said, it's twenty five dollar, and even I'm going to propose to, to give them a raise to up to fifty dollar per meeting, because, you know, gas is expensive, so they have to drive here, and so maybe to give them a little bit of money, all right? But the thing is, we need to give clear indication for us to create a new resolution of how we want our commission to perform, to, if there is a term limit, and so I want us to be clear, transparent, so, so let's talk about it, and how can we give Mr. Kim more directive and more, more, you know, meat to put on that ordinance, to bring it to us for us to vote on it? That's my.
Huge here. So I understand ordinances take precedent over resolutions, or, or what's the?
That's correct. And there's inconsistencies in the way that we have implemented term limits for the commissioners, because as stated in the staff report, we have the youth commission, senior citizens commission, and parks and ricks and fine arts commissions, they all have by ordinance a four year term limits. Then we have a resolutions directing a eight year term limits for all commissions, so there's inconsistencies, and because ordinance is a city law, whereas a resolution is an action taken, it, the ordinance would supersede the resolution.
It sounds like we should kind of drop the resolution and just update the ordinance to apply to all commissions.
So based on our discussion from the last meeting, I had a directive to come up with an amended resolution for eight year consecutive years term limit with a break of ninety days they can reapply. If there's no quorum, then the, even though they went past eight years, they could remain until a new, new commissioners are, are voted in. So it will have to be, if you're giving me the, the directive to do so, then I would have to amend the ordinance itself.
So, yeah. Oh, yeah, I was just going to, yeah, give that direction to amend the ordinance, drop the resolution, amend the ordinance. As said, I'll be fine with keeping it four years as the current ordinance reads, it's up to the rest of council, what they may say on that in that respect, but I'm fine with keeping it at the four years, have it apply to all commissions, and include that ninety day, include that, stay on the commission, you know, until, if, you know, all that stuff, right? It's not an automatic vacate, but, you know, there's, it's not a quorum or, and all that stuff. And I, and I, I think at the last council meeting, the idea of having some alternates on a couple of the commissions came up, and I've found out that other cities do that on some important commissions, like the civil service commission and the planning commission, and so I would kind of also like to suggest that, maybe having, having two alternates for those two commissions.
Or the civil service commission and the planning commission?
Yes. To understand, did we have a, a council planning commission recently because of lack of quorum?
Correct.
The last meeting, there was lack of quorum.
So, yeah, I think it'd be nice to maybe have two alternates for planning as well as the civil service.
I'd like to just point out the danger in doing that, and the danger in doing that is that some of these civil service, like civil service and the planning commission is, if somebody's not there continuously to hear like a civil service case, I used to be on the civil service commission, a case, and somebody comes in and steps in, and they have no prior knowledge, they're not going to be able to do their due diligence, due diligence, and be able to respond accordingly and render a decision correctly if they haven't been there for all the previous succession of meetings. So I think would be most, and that's particularly dangerous for having that occur on the civil service commission and the planning commission, which these projects, developments that are being proposed are presented over sometimes multi, many meetings, and cases that civil service commissioners have to deal with are go over two, three, four, five, five months worth.
Excuse me. Well, I was going to say, I, I won't push back on the civil service, but I know planning commission, it's, it's pretty common in other municipalities to have alternates on the civil, not on the planning commission. Civil service, I'm not adverse to those scenarios, but I know the planning commission, it's pretty common to have an alternate in other cities, so I still would like to have an alternate on the planning commission.
Well, I see the danger in city of Hawthorne doing that. Go ahead.
Okay, so I support the discussions that we've been having, it's like, I felt like this is so redundant because we were, we spoke on this in length, but I do support Councilmember Patterson's suggestion, and I do believe it should be four years. And just to piggyback on some of the speakers, just so that I, you know, there's a lot of rumors out there, and I just wish that folks would come to individuals such as us so that you could know exactly the truth. No one's being targeted. We are elected officials, so we're elected by the people, so that's the difference. You're appointed by the, by the council, that's the difference. And we do have term limits. Term limits were passed in 2020, so we do have term limits. So for folks to say we don't have term limits, we do. And because we've not addressed the commissioners in years, years, it's needed, it's needed so that we could be able to allow for other residents to have an opportunity to serve. I think it's very difficult for some that want to serve that they can't because they have longstanding commissioners that have been seated for a number of years. And so it's, it's time, and I do believe that the term limits are important, and I believe it should be four. Anyone can get acquainted with the task of a, of a commissioner, I say commission seat, just like we're given all this literature and all this reading, you have to do your, your job. Your job has to be getting familiar with what it is that your task to do on, on a commission appointed seat. So I understand, Mayor, what you're saying with regards to concerns for sensitive commission seats. However, there's, there's, there's a lot of history here in the city of Hawthorne with regards to planning, planning commission, with regards to civil service commission, and some of those at times, and I know folks are not going to like it, have been tainted, and it's politically driven. And so I want to assure that there's opportunities for everyone to participate, not just a few, not just those that have been seated for a long time and believe that they're, you know, they're never going to be removed, or they're never going to be, you know, asked to leave. It's, it's a given, it should be a given. You're appointed, not for a lifetime, but for an opportunity. So that's important, and that's, that's, I want to make sure that the ordinance is amended to reflect that, but with regards to the term, you know, in which I believe should be the right term, and if there's an opportunity for them to serve again, that's there, obviously, but we shouldn't have a revolving door that is just, you know, one minute you serve and then just because someone doesn't fill the seat, you're going to serve again and again and again and again. That shouldn't be an excuse. There are people that want to serve, they just have not had an opportunity because those seats have not become vacant or open.
Anybody else?
Through the chair? All right, thank you. So I would go along with, with the four year, but make sure to make clear that if there is no applicant for that particular commission seat, that the person continue to serve until a qualified candidate should, you know, put out an application and is voted by this, by this council, then, then that person could be replaced. And, and the same time about the alternate, if we go with alternate, so we have to put on that they have to attend the meetings, even they, they, they might not be sitting to vote, but they have to attend the, the meetings all the time in case they have to step in. It's like to be on a jury duty, you know, you are that the thirteen jury, you have to be on that for the deliberation all the time. So the same thing we could put in our ordinance, that if you become an alternate, you have to attend the meeting, but you will not vote if the commission have a quorum. But if there is no quorum, then that person can step in, right? But they have to attend the, on a regular basis. And the alternates should get that fifty dollar that I'm proposing if they came, if they come to the meeting. So just to make clear, so, so, yeah, if we do not have candidates for the, for the, for the position of the commissioners, the commission will continue to function, to be able to continue to do their work, and then if somebody shows up, and then whatever that is being term limit expired, then it will step out, and then the other person will come in. But they will continue to serve, right? So they don't need to be, have to get out and reapply again. I don't, I don't want to be doing, doing that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, can you confirm the neighboring cities or the cities that have alternates with regards to commissions?
I have, I started looking at some of the ordinance in some of the cities, I just, my recollection is that the cities with alternates for most of the commissions are usually larger cities. I, I think we can go ahead and have an ordinance where, for instance, planning commission and the, and the civil service commission have an alternate, but in terms of the number of people that are actually going to apply to be alternates, I'll leave it up to whatever happens. For now, I just need to make sure that I have clear direction to come up with the ordinance.
Whatever the majority hears, but I am asking you to give a, a public report on all the cities that have alternates. I mean, if this is being used for leverage for that concept, I want to see which cities have it. I'm not just going to take a simple comment at a meeting here. So just confirm that. And what size city, population along with that? Okay? And the number of members of the commissions, okay?
Through, through the chair, so I don't want to put Mr. Robert Kim over here, but just summarize what you have heard from us, Robert.
So the, the change is that it's from the eight consecutive years now, it's four consecutive years for the all commissions, it's not just the planning and, and the civil service, but all commissions, the term will be term limited. It's not just the planning and, and the civil service, but all commissions, the term will be, term limit will be four consecutive years. And that they may reapply after ninety days they have left the seat. They do not have to vacate until the, there is a, that seat is replaced. I want clarification because originally Councilman Patterson said that if there is no quorum. But I'm hearing Councilman Montero say that if there, if the seat is empty. Then the, the incumbent should stay even though they're past four years until that seat is filled. So that is the clarification that I would need.
I mean, me, my suggestion is if there's, a term is expired and they vacate and there's still a quorum. Then that should be fine because they can reapply in ninety days. But if their term expired and them vacating means there are no quorum, then they should stay until there's another applicant.
To the chair. The reason that I don't want them to vacate that, that, that seat. Because if we don't have an applicant to fit that seat, imagine if somebody gets sick or have to go to a trip, right? Then they lose the quorum. So that is where it's, my position is they should stay until somebody qualified and approved by us to replace that person. Because, you know, circumstance of life could happen, right? And then that, that commission might have no quorum until ninety days. Let's say if it's a planning commission, if we need, we need a hotel to be approved.
But there's going to be alternates for the planning commission.
Imagine if we don't have alternates, right? If, if nobody applied to be alternate. So that's, that's the, the caviar here. So that's why I don't want them to vacate until we have voted on, on a new person to say replace someone on the planning commission.
What's going to happen is there's not going to be a new person proposed while there's still people in that seat. So there'll be some, every applicant, there'll be applicants and there'll be nobody proposed.
I hope not.
So there has to be a vacancy so that either that person can reapply or that a new person can apply. Because if it's five people and there are some applicants in the wings. There's no requirement that a new person's proposed yet. So it would have to be once there's an applicant, then not once a, a new person's approved, would have to be once there's an applicant.
But, but you understand my concern, right?
Yeah, sure.
If something happened.
So, so let's say, let's.
We might not have a quorum for ninety days.
So my suggestion is instead of saying, once a new commissioner is voted on by the council, we'll dismiss the old one. We should say, once there's an applicant on file for that commission, then we'll dismiss the person that's termed out.
I agree with that language.
To the chair.
You got it?
Robert?
To the chair. So, you know, there's, a quorum is five, right?
Three.
Three, okay. So when you're saying, if there's not one, if there isn't one available, you don't want to break a quorum. So you want the three, you always want three, right?
Yes.
You always want three. And then city attorney, I believe, my opinion. That having an alternate on any commission is actually a conflict of interest. The reason I say that is because you have sensitive commissions such as civil service and planning commission. Where you're going to have at any given time, two people discussing a matter. And knowing how that person is going to either vote or feel about that particular place because you're going to always be talking. The reason I say that is because you're going to call that person and say, hey, I can't make the meeting tonight. Can you make it for me? Yeah. And all of a sudden they show up and you're like, hey, how did, oh, well, such and such called me. He wasn't going to be here today. So that's why I'm here. So.
Well, the alternates come to all the meetings.
Right. But I'm just giving you scenarios. So I just, my opinion, I said, my opinion. Is there's a conflict of interest by having an alternate for these particular commissions. And so look into that and then we'll go from there. But thank you.
Potentially not conflict of interest, but possible Brown Act violation occurring.
You're gonna, you're gonna, yeah, the Brown Act violations are going to be plenty. And you know what? The last, I'll be honest, the last thing I want is for a developer who has a crappy project to get it through based on what they're going to claim is misconduct. From the, from the planning commissions because of these concerns that you're mentioning.
That's why we need to vet out the planning and bring in.
And we're talking about the civil service, the civil service commission. If you're going to have an employee that's going to be having a grievance against the city, that's going to go through a court case and. They're going to win against the city all the time.
Through the chair. But, okay, put it this way, I, I understand what Ms. English, the mayor, what I'm saying. But at the same time, if, if the, the rules and regulation is clear. That, okay, if you're going to be an alternate in any commission, you have to abide by the Brown Act. It's like the jury, the thirteen jury sits over there and he or she not supposed to discuss the matter outside of the court with nobody. Because if they potentially to go seat on their jury. So the same thing as, as the planning commission or the civil service commission. That person has to have signed a con, a conflict of interest or Brown Act violation. Say, you know, if I become an alternate, I would not disclose or discuss any case in public with nobody. So that could be, but I understand about potentially Brown Act violation. So maybe should we vote if we agree on alternate or not? So I think so, so then Robert would just be.
Yeah, probably should, but I don't think seven people increases like a Brown Act violation versus five. It's the same risk by having three people, there, it can be a Brown Act violation. So. It, it, it would have protected us from having a planning commission for being canceled. And, you know, that's one of our important commissions. All of them are important.
To the chair.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I don't support an alternate. That's my two cents.
I don't think, I had a separate concern and now she brings up another one. So I don't think the.
Maybe we should vote on that particular item if we want alternate or not. I propose first to vote.
Sure.
So what is it? I don't think we should have an alternate. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, so let's vote.
So what's the motion?
Only on, just for clarity, only on the issue of whether the amended ordinance should have two alternates for civil service commission and planning commission.
Correct.
Well, we can do, we don't need to vote on it. We could just do it through consensus.
What's your, what's your position on it?
I don't, I don't think so.
Do we need a, an alternate?
Yeah, the suggestion is having an alternate so we don't have to risk important meetings from the planning commission or the civil service commission being canceled because of lack of quorum. The last, or the last planning commission was canceled because there wasn't three people available to hold the meeting. So if we had an alternate, then that would have been prevented. And so obviously if there's, we have, we don't have the proper. Planning commissions and development and things that come before the planning commission like CUPs don't get to be heard in a timely manner.
But shouldn't we wait to vote until Mister Kim comes back with numbers from other cities? In terms of how many alternates that they have?
That you could.
He, he made a, I don't mean to interrupt it, but I, I did ask for that, right? I did ask for it, but initially now he's telling us that from what he's looked at, he's looking at larger cities, larger cities, Long Beach.
I, I don't want to be, you know, confirming that. That's my, I wasn't looking for that issue. But I, I did see several cities with alternates on their commissions, but they were larger cities that I saw.
So the smaller cities don't have alternates.
It's not a rule. There are some cities are sized that do.
If, if there are, there are, if there are, there aren't, I can't confirm one way or the other. It's, it's just, um, what the council should consider are, are there enough interested applicants for each of these? So that you have alternates, people willing to apply as alternates that are willing to stay silent and willing to attend every meeting. In case they're needed to come in to vote.
Yeah, that seems pointless. If you can't vote and you can't really participate, then why do you need an alternate?
The alternate fills in when there's not enough people to hold the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Kind of as, as Councilman Montero mentioned, it's, it's exactly like the alternate jurors in a, in a jury trial. There's two alternates that sits there and does not participate in the decision, but they have to sit there in case they're needed, yes.
And they follow the same rule as a juror, or the same rule as a commissioner, not to discuss the issue beyond this wall.
And it's only for the planning and the civil, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
But the thing is, why are we focusing on the planning and the civil?
Why are we still here?
That was you talking about this.
So do you have a position? We.
I, 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 you know what, honestly, I see both sides, the good side and the bad side. And it's really hard to, because at one point I don't see a purpose for the alternates. But then what he says makes sense. So I'm still on the fence. I, I need more.
It's a great area. It's a very, it's a great area.
It's gray for me.
It's a great area. I, I have to, it's a great area. So, so that's why I say I'm not in favor or opposed. I'm in.
I mean, take a position, bring it to a rest, either happen or not happen.
If I make a decision, can we move on?
That's what, that's what we're waiting for.
You gotta just remember, Councilmember Manning, that there's dangers, potential Brown Act violations that could take place. There's lack of continuity when it has to do with developments.
So the, the city attorney, is there a Brown Act issue? Will we be Facebook?
Not us.
Not us, but if we vote to have the alternate, is there a Brown Act violation in doing this?
So the Brown Act violation would occur if the commissioners, there are three of them discussing a potential business item, city business item. Before, before there actually is a hearing or before there is actually a meeting. So it has, so if you had, for instance, two alternates discussing between themselves, oh, you know, what do you think of that? What do you think of this? That's not a Brown Act violation. There's, it's, it's when there is three person in a five commission. That discuss a business item before the actual hearing.
Okay, so I'm going to make this decision because I am an alternate for the central committee and I do understand how that works. And so when I make this decision, all the council people said we will move forward off this. I vote for alternate.
Correct.
Well, uh, hold, hold on because, because I'm still debating about the alternate. So, uh, because, because for, for us to go to move on, I was going to remove my vote for the alternate. Because I was going to say, so let's just do the commission then, and then we'll see maybe down the road, if we need, we will come back. So I remove my support for alternates.
Uh, it looks like there's no alternate. Let's, let's just move on.
Okay, so let's just move on. Let's just move on, city attorney.
Everything except the alternate.
No alternate.
No alternate, let's move on.
No alternate for now.
Thank you.
Okay, got it.
I know, I know, I know.
I know, I was going to say that anyway. Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your feedback. And thank you to the commissioners out there for your service.
And don't forget that fifty dollar, okay? Twenty-five dollar raise.
You have to make that direction and put it on.
I'm, I'm giving a director so it can bring on that.
That probably needs, that needs to be included in there.
Yeah.
I didn't see any opposition to that. So I didn't hear any opposition.
Is that something we could do?
Well, I would have to look at the budget, but we will consider it for our budget update.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that something that?
These abilities.
Because, because just take into consideration as we add alternates, that adds an increase to the budget too, just.
No alternate. No. We have no alternate. We're moving on.
Hey, guys, uh, all right, thank you, guys. Let, let me see, let me see, let me see. Thank you. Elected officials' reports, recommendations. We will start with city treasurer, Marie Pauline Dexter Hornbach.
First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight. There can never be enough prayers, so I'd like to send my prayers to the city of Monterey Park. And even though they aren't in the room, many prayers and condolences to the own family that was here earlier. I'd like to say on the nineteenth, I attended a presentation over at the Hawthorne Historical Society given by Torrance Memorial. Torrance Memorial has a new facility close to city limits. And I'd like to thank Pam Fee and Bob Jensen over there at the Historical Society for being such gracious hosts. Next, I would like to request sitting on the finance oversight committee and the ad hoc for the economic development committee.
Well, this is your report. That's not, we're not gauging just.
No, that's it.
See, they could look and see what's going on.
Thank you.
City clerk, Dana William Hunter, please.
Thank you. Want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank the mayor, everybody here at council, city manager, city attorney. You all always do such a great job at getting to the bottom of things and helping people out, and I appreciate that. Want to express my condolences to the, you know, mass shooting victims and their families. A lot of that going around and it's very unfortunate. Want to update you, I actually attended yesterday a six-hour notary training class. And took the test directly afterwards. So we're getting up to speed in the clerk's office as far as having notaries. We are also now members of the City Clerk Association for California. Every clerk in the office is now a member, which I don't think that was happening before. And also want to talk a little bit about Black History Month on February eleventh, the food drive that Carla talked about. Maxine Waters is going to come out and we have a couple of nonprofits that are going to come out as well. We're going to ask the police to possibly attend with their popcorn or maybe the hot dog machine there. We have some football players. My son-in-law is actually coach of the year at Hawthorne High School. So he's going to have his football team come over in their jerseys to take pictures and to help ladies with their bags to the cars. And before that, I'd like to have interns come around and interview every single person on council to talk about what Black History Month means to them. Specifically Montero, I'd like to have you really talk about where you're from because I don't think people know a lot about that. And I think that that is important. It is black history. And talk a little bit about your career paths and whatnot, and we'll edit it and we'll do, not fancy editing, we'll do real editing. And also Montero, happy birthday. It was a fabulous event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, council member David Patterson, I'm sorry. We'll just go this way.
Sure. All right. You know, first want to thank the community for coming out, making your voices heard, participating in the process. Want to thank staff for your hard work and many of you guys going over and above your, your job title to serve the city of Hawthorne. I appreciate you. And I want to thank the, the city manager, city attorney and our chief of police. Over the weekend on Saturday, I participated in the first applicant orientation held by the Hawthorne Police Department. And I was, it just felt great to be invited to participate in that process and address these applicants. To my understanding, and my numbers may not be exact, we have eighty, or seventy applicants to join Hawthorne Police Department in right now. About thirty-five people came out to the orientation. And so that showed just a lot of interest. I know nowadays there's a waning interest in becoming police officers throughout the country. And we're probably down eight officers in our police department from getting to our, our ideal number of a hundred. So it's great to see so many applicants. And to be honest with you, I was very excited to see that we had six black people who were at that orientation as well. Hawthorne Police Department doesn't have many African-American officers and our city is, you know, twenty-five percent black. And so I think it's important that we have that kind of representation in our police department. So it was great to see some, some black applicants interested in, in joining our ranks of the police department. So you got a few things to try to get through it. Maybe we can grab some interns to support the Hawthorne Business Connect, paid for and supplied by the web. That's something that can be considered. We have community cleanup coming up Saturday, March eighteenth, eight AM at the, starting at the Betty Ainsworth Center. Let's see. I want to thank Ducey Medina for your hard work with working to house our unhoused population. Something that's important to all of our residents, right? To, to support that, that. Uh, it's something that's important to all of our residents, right, to, to support that, that, that population. I appreciate your efforts. On that topic, though, I, I did have a resident, I'm just kind of communicating a, a request from a resident, uh, gave me a call and said that they're driving under the four or five overpass on Rosecrans and some, uh, can was thrown from near the overpass and they believe it came from a homeless person who might be camping out there. And, you know, wanted to see what we can do about addressing those type of things. And so he said that, you know, things like that have happened more than once. So we want to see, you know, what we can do or even talk to, uh, Caltrans about kind of addressing that. Um, Mr. City Manager, you kind of advised me on the best way to, uh, bring into discussion our mixed-use overlay um, on, in our housing element down Crenshaw Boulevard. I know we did a mixed-use overlay on the property of, uh, Rosecrans and Crenshaw, but I think it's something that might be valuable to include down Crenshaw Boulevard as well. Um, so, you know, inform me about whatever the right process, kind of bring that out to the council to kind of make that happen. Um, couple more things, couple more things. Let's see, um, for council compensation, I know that we get a CPI, CPI increase annually, but we have to put it on the agenda. Uh, can we bring that to the agenda? Can we add the same increase to our, um, our fuel allowance as well? Can we create some type of formalized program for a jo, a job training program that kind of comes through the city? Um, you know, if I need to connect with somebody at the web, you know, let me know who I need to talk to, but maybe have some kind of resources on our website where, uh, uh, residents who are looking for job training opportunities and companies who want to sign up for that can kind of come through the city and can help kind of organize or coordinate that. There's a number of businesses that are pretty big and successful that are willing to, out of their own pocket, to, um, supply a job training program for some of our residents. And I know the web has some of those same, um, programs as well, but, you know, definitely like for us to have a, have a, um, kind of some formalized effort and way to kind of hold that kind of effort accountable. Maybe we can work with the, um, Cinderella Valley School District with their graduates to participate in that. I know we have that, that project on Courtery kind of happening. And I know we had a legal, illegal confidential about this current status. I just want to ask for continual updates about that and when the time is right, take the right action to, to move that forward in whatever way that we can. We, uh, I want to make sure when we have our annual performance evaluations for our city manager, city attorney, and chief of police, that it's a kind of formal process that we can kind of work with a professional and make sure that, you know, it's where it's not just like council people getting together and say, hey, what do you think? But like a, kind of a formalized process, a way to kind of have some metrics and, and, um, be able to, you know, acknowledge the, the growth and successes um, of all those positions. And can we begin to advertise and recruit for commissioners, um, for all of our commissions? Not all of them have vacancies. Not all of them will have vacancies, but we want to know if there are people interested in joining those commissions and encourage those applicants, um, and go ahead and, and kind of, um, work to promote that type of civil engagement. I think a lot of people don't know that this is something they can do. And, um, and let's, uh, order a study for, um, speeding on, uh, the area that that family talked about, I believe it's on Turo off El Segundo. Let's order a speed study and see if speed humps or something is, um, you know, is needed. And I, I would like to connect with the senior commission about, uh, doing some type of informational for our seniors about financial abuse scams and caller scams, trying to take advantage of seniors. I know that the treasurer talked about that as well. And, and, you know, we'd love to connect with the senior commission and work with some kind of event or informational, whether we do it online, whether we do it in person. Um, let's kind of make that happen. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, uh, thank you very much for all of our constituents to come in and, and express their concerns. I appreciate all the attention that they put, uh, time and effort. I want to say thank you to all our staff because like I said, you know, uh, they've been working very hard and that, that's, uh, an example when they presenting, uh, the Business Connect, that, uh, they put all these proposals together in less than four weeks. So, uh, like I said, you know, thank you, city manager, for having, um, our city hall and for the, all the head departments and all the staff that work on this. This is fantastic. And that's the, to show that we have talent. But also I don't want them to be overloaded, overworked, because I know, you know, they're doing sometime, you know, multiple jobs. So, uh, so that's what, I don't want them to become, uh, overwhelmed. And if they need help, just please, you know, come to us uh, and, and, and tell us what, what they need. So I appreciate that. Um, again, Dulce, you know, like the homeless, like tax, tax force and the, and the work that she does, uh, is tremendous. So, um, and that is why, uh, I ask our city manager to look in, uh, in our budget as of July first to make her a permanent, uh, worker for the city of Hawthorne. So she will be working for us instead of splitting her time with, uh, with San Magr Center in Lenox. So thank you very much. I want to say thank you for all these flyers that we receive, you know, for the, for the free classes for seniors, uh, to, uh, the new, uh, pick, uh, Bingo and, and pick, pick, pickleball, you know, training at the, at the senior center and the memorial center. I'm very proud of the community service because when you look at this book, at all the programs at the community, uh, service center, you know, the memorial center and the seniors, uh, is a beautiful program and all the, all the things that happen there, from youth to seniors, uh, to young adults. So make sure you got one of these, uh, magazines, like a magazine. So this is something that probably, uh, with the Business Connect can create some type of a booklet for the city of Hawthorne through the Business Connect. I'm glad to see that we're gonna have a dock park, ribbon cutting on February thirteenth at Memorial's Park. So thank you, because this is something that we've been asking for a long time, David and I. So thank you, Vaughn, uh, for coming for wish to make it happen. Um, again, I want to say thank you to all of those who went to celebrate my reelection and my birthday. So I appreciate all, all the, for you stopping by and thank you for all the gifts. Uh, one of the big gift that was brought to us through the city of Hawthorne, through our Congresswoman, uh, Maxine Waters, she announced that she's gonna bring us four point one million dollar for the, uh, for the Crenshaw corridor, so to, to, so to make that Crenshaw even better. So she, uh, I was glad to hear that, uh, it was a gift to the city of Hawthorne on my behalf. Imagine that? So, um, and that's why the things, you know, we have to say thank you to all our, uh, other colleagues, you know, from the state and like Tina McKernan, from the, um, Senator Bradford and the County Supervisor Holly Mitchell, and then Maxine Waters is watching for Hawthorne. So, and that is what we have to build, all these connection and collaborative and treat them with respect because, uh, they are helping us. So, I do want to say, you know, my deepest sympathies and, and to the family Leon, because I know I saw, uh, I saw the tent on the street that day, uh, with the accident. So I knew somebody did die on that intersection. Uh, so, um, and I do understand, you know, the Leon family is right. Uh, people are speeding up in our streets and we have to come up with, uh, with ideas how to slow them down. Uh, and that is where, you know, we've been putting a speed hump in a lot of our, uh, street and residential area. And I know El Segundo is like, uh, I know it's, it would, would not be able to put speed humping in El Segundo Boulevard, but to, to create more crosswalk. Because, you know, so because the distance between Ramona and El Segundo, there is no crosswalk all the way to Inglewood and, and El Segundo. So it's, it's almost like three blocks. And some people tend to jaywalk through that street a lot, because I live right here on Ramona, right? So I see that. So that is where we need to figure it out. Um, the lady said something about crosswalk. Uh, maybe we should do something so to slow down the traffic. And even though those flashing lights, crosslight, you know? So, uh, because they've been speeding up on El Segundo, on one-twenty, you know, all over the place, even on the side streets, you know, they're going crazy. So, uh, we need to do something about it. Um, yeah, and it's been, uh, for these past two days, you know, a lot of shooting, you know, especially in California. So, you know, in the, like I said, Monterey Park, you know, our, our sympathy goes to all the families and the Asian-American community. And then also at, um, at, in the north, you know, at that, um, I forgot the name of the place, Half Moon Bay? Yeah, Half Moon Bay. So all, all our sympathy goes to those families and the Asian-American community. Now, I want to give a directive. Uh, this is, uh, I think we talked about this in the past. But you know how some projects, uh, that were approved by the planning commission, right? Uh, before COVID nineteen happened, those projects were approved and then it was supposed to come into a fruition or to, to be started, but they didn't do it because of COVID and because maybe some other, uh, uh, county and the state regulation. It's for us to look at those projects that is, that were approved and now they have to be recertified or renewed. So maybe to help the, the people go through the process a little bit more faster, you know, to, to make sure that they are going to abide by the new building laws, you know, current building and safety laws that, that comes from the state, you know? Cause I know, you know, from, for example, from twenty sixteen, eighteen, now we have a new buildings, uh, zoning laws and building codes, et cetera, et cetera. So, but to help them go through that process a little bit quicker, right? So they don't need to be, uh, starting all over. So, so, so those projects can come into, um, in compliance and, and to start it ASAP for, because, you know, Hawthorne is in the crossroad. Uh, and actually, uh, David and I attend a Zoom meeting this morning, uh, that numbers for Hawthorne are improving economically, household. So, and that is going to give us a boost for when it comes to economic development and to bring restaurants and some other, uh, business in Hawthorne. So, uh, sometimes, you know, we hire consultant and I'm, you know, basis on those statistics that they brought us this morning. I had to say our money is well spent on those consultants. So, and later on, he, they're gonna come to the city council and present their findings. But, uh, since we are part of the economic developed, so we're looking into how we're going to make Hawthorne a big destination for new business, right? They're gonna be the envy of our neighbors. So we're gonna do that. So, uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, we send a message out there that Hawthorne is open for business. And that is where my directives to try to help the, the project that has been hold because of COVID, uh, to make sure that, uh, those projects are in compliance with the new codes, you know, building and safety, and but just to help them up so them, they will not start from the scratch. Okay? And again, good night and, um, I hope everybody's safe out there.
Mayor Protem English and you're English?
Um, okay. I don't know if anybody mentioned that, uh, there's free senior classes happening at, um, Betty Ainsworth. So I'm, I'm making sure our wrecking park see me. We're giving this information out to the community. There's great classes taking place, indoor walking, pickleball and tai chi, tai chi, tai chi or tai chi. So, um, take advantage of that. That's awesome. Thank you, uh, Dulce, for the presentation on our, um, homeless coordination program. Appreciate that. And everyone, um, doing the homeless count here in Hawthorne. Keep in mind that, uh, even, uh, if you sleep on a couch at someone's home, you're considered homeless. So those count too. Um, great book. I love the Hawthorne Guide. If, I don't know if we have some out in the lobby, but great, great pictures. Um, so take, take, take one home with you if you haven't seen that. Um, to the Hawthorne Business Connect, thank you, uh, to everyone that worked on this and will continue to work on this. It's my hope that we could, uh, ultimately help a lot of businesses and bring our own resources, but more importantly, um, take advantage of events and things that we could do here in the community that will engage businesses. Again, through speaker series, um, it could be, uh, presentations, uh, from Sacramento, could be, um, even, um, senior fraud. I, 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 I know when I worked in the state assembly and the state senate, they do have resources for, uh, financial literacy and also for some other things. So I think it'll connect well with business. But thank you so much for all that and I look forward to hearing more and also how I could help, um, to make sure this program is a successful one. Really quick, uh, again, my, uh, deepest condolences to the community of Monterey Park, um, to the mayor, to city council colleagues and all of those, uh, involved. Uh, and thank you to, uh, our own Hawthorne Police Department for reaching out to the city of Monterey Park and offering mutual aid. Thank you so much for that. Um, and also in the city of Torrance, we, I did see Hawthorne PD, uh, in Torrance, um, helping, the Torrance Police Department. So thank you for that. Um, to our city clerk, thank you for all that you're doing. I see you. Uh, I participated on Saturday and came up and, and got a couple goodies for myself to take to the buildings that I live at. And I distributed that wide through the two buildings that I live at. And so I'm always doing that. Go way back with regrets to ensuring folks have, uh, something to eat all the time. Um, but thank you for that. And, um, congratulations on, um, your efforts to get your CMC certified municipal clerking certificate and also your, um, notary, uh, certificate. That's, that's great success. I got my CMC, but I don't have my notaries. I wish I would have done that. But thank you. Um, let's see. Um, I want to thank Public Works with regards to all the great parking, uh, tea parking that they've done throughout the city. I don't know if, uh, any of you have seen that, but there's more of it and it looks more organized when cars are parked. They stay in their space. Um, there's still some that, um, are not done. And I, from what I understand, it's to, uh, help, uh, occupy vehicles that are not as tiny or fit that particular tea spot. But, um, they're making the tea spots even a little bit larger, I saw. So thank you to Public Works and, um, all the work they're doing, um, with our tea parking, uh, across the city. Um, thank you. Um, I'm gonna thank all of the churches and entities that applied for the scholarship from the city. And there was, uh, a lot of you, whether you were faith-based communities, nonprofit organizations that received a grant from the city to help, um, continue in your efforts here in the community. So thank you for everyone submitting their application to receive a grant and congratulations on, uh, your success. There are, um, a couple of things I wanted to make mention. I look forward to the pallet shelter housing that's gonna be coming, uh, in April, I believe. Um, look forward to that. And, uh, we did a groundbreaking and I believe that's April, right? Somewhere in April?
Yes, we're looking for a soft opening, April two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, so look forward to, to seeing that and having, um, the community participate and see what we're doing to help, again, address our homeless community. Um, I want to also make mention that on February fourteenth, we have the gas company that's coming to do a presentation. Uh, a lot of residents have been calling. I've received calls today, uh, with regards to their gas prices going up and they don't know, understand why. So we're gonna ask the gas company to just explain, uh, in detail, um, why the prices have gone up. And they've gone up substantially too, uh, for most that have, that have told me their, their bills. So I'm glad that, uh, we're having a representative come out and speak on that. Um, real quick, um, city attorney, can you please, um, schedule a closed session to address the mall? Thank you. Um, I know there's a lot of requests for, um, you know, preferential parking, permitted parking. We've had these discussions go on and on and on and on. You know, I, I don't, I really don't want our city to be inundated with permit parking. I understand there's, you know, signatures and folks that are looking for that, but I really want to make an assessment to see like, where's, you know, where's the, where's the issues at? I don't know who could do that. I don't know if someone could go out there and take a look at, um, you know, the report that we got from one of the constituents here. But I, I really would like to see, uh, an assessment made to see, um, if there's any other resources that we could provide to address their concerns. Um, what else? Oh, okay, one last thing. I feel left out. Because it's February and it's African-American month. And I don't know if you know. And I don't know if you know, maybe not, but my family's blended. My daughters recognize themselves as black. I'm Latina, but, you know, my daughters are hardcore, black. And my seven grandchildren, okay? Seven grandchildren, seven.
Congratulations.
Yeah, seven. Five girls and two boys. But, um, kudos to all you that are working hard to assure that the month of February is, um, something that we recognize here in the city of Hawthorne. Whether it be through, uh, again, an event or, um, some type of community gathering to just show, um, hard work and efforts and how far we've come, right? And, um, the perfect example is you three. But more importantly, um, what, what, you know, what's ahead in the future, right? And so look forward to working along with you on anything that we could think of that, uh, again, could shine the light on, on February, just like we're gonna shine the light on May 2nd for Cinco de Mayo. Right?
There is a Hispanic, there is a Hispanic, right?
I'm so blessed to be mixed, like mixed, mixed, mixed. And I have Native American too, so there you go. But, uh, but thank you. Good meeting, good, good, good evening. And thank you, Mayor, uh, excuse me, Vaughn, for what you're doing with our staff retreat. And, um, Robert for what you're doing and heading up just some real sensitive, um, issues that we, we gotta get through. And so, and to our interim chief back there, thank you for, um, all the, all the, 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 the good things that you're doing. We had the coffee, coffee with the cop at Starbucks, um, last week, was it last week? I think it was last week. That was a great turnout at the new Starbucks. I don't know if you guys been to the new Starbucks. But we need to start planning a little bit more activities to, um, say hi to some of these businesses because they were excited that we were there. The police was there, city was there, but they were excited that we were there. So, yeah, thank you.
Just, um, um, just for the council, just remember have all your bullet items, uh, your items bulleted, um, so that we avoid go-banks at any point, just to make sure that there's a continuity and everybody gets their place free of, uh, flow here. Councilwoman Katrina Manning?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to say thank you to Dulce for her presentation, um, in regards to the homeless, uh, Business Connect. You guys did an awesome job. I feel like you guys should be on Channel 22 selling, um, commercials, uh, about our business. Really, you guys should do the commercial. And I don't see Chris Palmer, but he did a good job too, um, you guys back and forth. That was awesome. I really enjoyed that. I wanted to give my condolences to Michael Leon, I think it's Bermudas, the family, um, city manager. I would like to make a donation to, uh, that family. So if maybe you can, um, give me the contact information to make a donation, uh, to that family. Also, I have it right here? Oh, okay, thank you. And then also, um, I wanted to, uh, give my condolences to all the folk, um, in Monterey Park. And we also had another shooting, um, I think in the valley, Marrow Bay. And so just, it's just heartbreaking with all this gun violence that's going on. And I will continue to pray for, um, our city, but also our world that we live in, um, that the violence can come to a stop. And then also I wanted to take this moment to, uh, apologize to former councilwoman, uh, Olivia Valentine, um, for Channel 4 making the mistake of, um, saying that I was and not you. I, uh, respect you. I look up to you. And I don't want you to ever think that I purposely tried to do anything or to lead the narrative to think other than you being the first, uh, black woman. I am very proud that I was able to come behind you. So I apologize on behalf of Channel 4. And that's it.
Thank you, colleagues. All right, so I'm gonna just, uh, get through this. So, um, it's Black History Month and, uh, it just brings memories, my memories of, uh, a conference that I had attended in, uh, Atlanta. And, uh, I had, uh, stay, my brother and I, John Vargas, we stayed like an extra week, whole week. And we, we went to see all the civil rights sites that, you know, that are known. Atlanta, we saw, you know, uh, Martin Luther King's, uh, tomb and his museum. And I think he had one of his churches that he served in right there. And, uh, we made it all the way to Birmingham, Montgomery, to Selma, you know, to Tuskegee, you know, the university. So we saw all those things that you always hear about. And it was awesome. It was an awesome experience, but sad at the same time. Uh, when we went to Selma, you would have expected that now, this is about five years ago, but still current, that things would have gotten better, you know, that there was no divisions, that to be, you know, everybody's living side by side. But even in Selma, unfortunately, certain things are carried, still carrying over. Um, there's separation between blacks and whites there. You would have expected it to have been integrated by now, but it's still in one side of the, of the town is, it's the, this is sharp division still. Uh, one side is, uh, black and one side is, uh, white. And, uh, certain things, uh, many things have changed for the better, but there's still work that this country has to do to be able to make things, uh, right amongst all groups. Okay? So it just brought memories. Happy birthday, councilmember Montero. I was not able to attend, but you know, I was, you were in my thoughts and, and my prayers and, uh, congratulations. So you look great, man. You look great. The, also with regards to, you know, some, a little bit of the history that like, African-American Black History Month, uh, leads me to, uh, to remember is how Holly Park and Holly Glen are mirror images of each other because they were developed by the same developer. Holly Glen was developed because of all the World War, right after or during World War II that it started getting built. All the people working at the Rock, North American Aviation, uh, World War II aircraft production center right there, where you go up 120th, that used to be all World War II military aircraft that was being built. And Northrop Aviation, Jack Northrop's company over here on this side where Holly Park is at, was developed as well. As we know, Holly Park is, uh, predominantly African-American, uh, at this moment still. But it didn't start off that way. So right after the war, you know, you had your specific demographics, but it started shifting because there was a demand for workers from across the country and many people answered the call. From the south in particular, people came from Louisiana, from Mississippi, Alabama. People came to, uh, work, government jobs and at the, in aerospace. And so they chose, uh, Holly Park as their home. And many, many of those people that came, uh, uh, during those times, some of them are still there, some have passed, right? But, uh, longtime residents, I would, I would like to say middle to upper middle class, uh, community. That's the way I gather. So, um, it just brings to mind a little bit of the history as to how our city of Hawthorne has always had a history, uh, with, uh, people from different groups. The next thing is the PSAs. Thank you. That's a good suggestion, uh, working with the senior commission in order to come up with, uh, the, the content of some of these, uh, PSAs that we're thinking about. Of course, the chief has to come up with the bullet points, but the feedback and the concerns of these groups that we have throughout the city, the youth, uh, commission, the senior commission, the veterans commission, et cetera, the women's commission as well. If we can get feedback from those groups so that we can have, uh, appropriate messaging, well thought out and with everybody contributing, we don't want somebody saying, "You didn't ask us" and we think that this would have been important to include. So let's make sure that we are very comprehensive when we do the research for this. Is that okay, chief? You're looking at me like you're mad at me, man, giving you all this stuff. All right. So that's that, that, that. I think we need to be very careful with the parking permit issue. We, uh, we ran into the issue with previous councils. People here were observant, Katrina Manning, uh, councilwoman, you remember some of the stuff. And I think you, you've been on the council during that time, you too. But people ask for permit parking and then the problem goes to the next street. Then they ask for permit parking because they have a problem and it goes to the next street, to the next street. So I think we need to be careful, uh, trying to move away from that or keep as is. There's, is there a moratorium? Yes, there's been a unofficial moratorium. But, uh, we need to, what the conversation from Ms. Yan Fang brought up was something very important and that I want to highlight to my council colleagues. It's very critical that when we make land use policy and we approve developments that we take what someone like Ms. Yan Fang mentioned. People in these apartments have only one parking spot. They should most likely have two to be able to accommodate the amount of cars that they have. And this is something that keeps repeating itself because we have developers that come and ask for these density bonuses, which means if they build extra stuff, extra stuff, the government, the state government's gonna let them reduce the amount of, uh, parking spaces, reduce the amount of green space, uh, reduce the, uh, amount of space between the sidewalk, uh, between the edge of the street, the sidewalk, up to where the building starts. All these little things that they're doing, they're not doing this for the benefit of our, the benefit of the community, guys. When a developer comes up here and asks for all these density bonuses, it's not to help with our housing issues. It's for them to be able to fit more units in one spot so they can make more money. That's simply all it is. It's not about providing like, uh, better housing, more housing and stuff for people. So there are responsible developers out there. We have to recognize that people who want to work. Um, and then there's those who are the same people that we kind of hear about. So we need to just be very careful as to what, that's what this conversation that the lady, um, mentioned, how it stood out for me. There's an issue with parking because we keep making decisions that are not sensible for the community. So we need to be very careful. And if we are going to make residential, let's make sure that it has the proper amount of parking and that proper amount of setbacks, good green space and make it a good quality of life. What else? So look, um, I think that's it for me. Thank you all, my colleagues, for the healthy discussions today. I want to close in memory of Michael Leon Bermudas. I would like to ask all my colleagues and the community and people out on TV land just to, and I also want to close in the honor of all those, in memory of those who passed away in Monterey Park, up in Marrow Bay, Half Moon Bay, Half Moon Bay, and there's a couple, two or three others. So let's, moment of silence, please. Uh, may all those, uh, victims rest in peace. This meeting is adjourned at 9:03.